Good morning and welcome to day two of our budget workshops. I call this meeting to order. Let's have a roll call. Let's rise for the invocation.
Let us pray. Oh, by thy grace, we come to God, the life, the truth, the way, whose earthly path thy foot has trod. Master, teach us to pray. We thank thee, Lord, for this day and this hour and for the privilege of being one of your servants. We ask that you would bless our county, its officers and members, and bless us in mind, body, spirit, and soul, and continue to lead us and to guide us, and forgive us for all of our transgressions and our sins, for us in your holy name we pray, amen.
Amen.
With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Have a motion on the agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Let's vote. Sure. Raise your hand for the approval of the agenda. Tom?
I count them with the majority that passes.
Okay. All right, first up, we have Dr. Linker.
Good morning, Chairman Webb, commissioners. We appreciate the opportunity to be with you this morning. We'll introduce, I've got Michael Cowan, our finance officer. Where are you going? Oh, my. And we also have Facilities Matt Johnson with us if we have some any other questions about that as well, so.
I'm a little troubled when the finance officer tries to hide.
Yeah, I see he ducked out on me pretty quick. I don't know how well this is going to go today. But I'm going to actually let Michael go ahead and start. I would like to share some information on the school system. I would give everyone.
Thank you.
Our Inspire magazine that we just had printed or so in the last month. Talks about all of our schools, all of the programs, STEM labs, beginning of our early college program.
Thank you.
Which is off to an amazing success.
Is this the first time this was published?
We printed one last year as well. And this is, we updated it this year because of all the changes in the last year we've had, including our virtual academy, our dual-language program starting next year. So Pitt County Schools is jumping ahead by light years, I would say. So, but we're here to talk about the budget at this point. And Mr. Cowan?
Hi, thank everyone. Good morning.
Good morning.
Appreciate the opportunity to come before you and again to present the proposed budget for 2015-16. I actually look forward to this because it means I made another year. If you're there, I'm here, then it means good for my family. And so again, I appreciate that opportunity and I, yeah, it didn't start out so well, but we'll see how it goes from here. And again, I couldn't stand before you today without first and foremost saying thank you for everything that you do for the students, the staff, the parents of Pitt County Schools. I've said it over and over again, and I truly do mean it. We could not do what we do without you and the investment that you have made into the lives of our students. It's a $35 million-plus investment, and you are to be commended for that and thanked as many times as we have the opportunity to do so. And also, we continue to try to make sure that when we out and about with our leadership and our board, that we do communicate that as well, of how much your commitment to education means to our school system. Now, today's our opportunity to talk to you about next year's proposed budget, but it's also an opportunity to, you know, just spend a few minutes talking about some of the other financial issues that impact our operations because financial impacts, financial issues impact our financial operations as well as operations within the classroom. So I think we kind of look at them all together. And also, we want to talk about new charter schools, talk about some, spend a few minutes talking about teacher assistants, move into the proposed increase in county appropriations, and then follow up with the county capital appropriation. First of all, impact charter schools. We do have two new charters that will be opening up within Pitt County next year. These will be two charters that will actually physically be located within Pitt County, the Winterville Charter Academy as well as Ignite Charter Academy, projected to have about 700 students enrolled into those two schools, two charter schools. Vast majority of those students coming from Pitt County Schools, coming from our student population, not all, but not quite a majority of that. And in the process, we try to project how that will impact our enrollment and try to have a conservative, more aggressive approach to this to try to make sure that we're budgeting fiscally responsible. But if we look at our current year ADM, it's average daily membership, otherwise known as number of students. If we look at our number of students this year, it's approximately 23,881. Just in a normal year, without the introduction of any new charters, we would be looking at growth of about 223 students. But now, we've got the potential for up to 700 or more, or less, of students to come from Pitt County Schools and take other opportunities elsewhere, which would bring our ADM somewhere around the 23,400 level, could be higher, could be lower. We'll make that determination as we receive more information through the summer and as we move into this first 20 days of the school year. But we are looking at a net reduction in our student population for next year. When that happens, we lose funding both at the state level and we also have to redirect local appropriations that we receive from the county of Pitt. The most easiest for me to kind of explain is the state appropriations. The state has formulas for, funding formulas for teacher assistance, teachers, instructional supplies, but the core of those formulas is students. As the number of students go up, the funding goes up. As the number of students go down, the funding goes down. And with the projected loss of students to charters, we are projecting reductions in our state allocations for next year. In fact, we have already started to communicate out to our schools, the reduction of approximately 47 positions at the school level for next year. And these are real. Matter of fact, you know, we had a crucial conversation this past week with our schools sending out the teacher allotments. We have one school out there that's losing four and a half teachers next year and over two teacher assistant positions as a result of the reduction in projected enrollment due to charters. It's interesting to note that we have not included any increase in county appropriations to fund any reduction in state funding due to charters in next year's budget. But these are real, and we're moving forward with our planning allotments to compensate for the projected reduction. When it comes to local appropriations, for every charter school student that lives within Pitt County and attends a charter, we must pay the local county appropriations per student. I mean, we must physically cut them a check, a portion of the county appropriations per student, for that student. This goes for students that may have not ever even attended Pitt County Schools. For example, we, if you have this year, a student that was attending a private school or was homeschooled, that student enrolls, that parents enroll that student into a charter next year, we then have to pay the charter, the local county appropriation per student for that student. Kind of giving you an example, we discussed that we're projecting somewhere around 23,400 students to actually attend Pitt County Schools. Next year, we are projecting a total of 993 students that will be attending charters. 700, around 700 within confines of the two new charters and various others, Washington Montessori, Beargrass Charter, the Nurseby School, Children's Village, also that live in Pitt County and attend those charters. If you break that down, the appropriations, county appropriations, and the fines and forfeitures on a per-student basis, works out to be somewhere around $1,500. So if we're projecting a reduction of 700 students, that's a million dollars, a million $54,000 that we will have to physically pay, cut a check to the charters for that reduction in students. Another way of putting it, if our local appropriations next year are somewhere around the $36.2 million, we actually hope it'd be more than that, but if it's around that level, we would have to basically skim off a million dollars off the top before we provide one dime of payment for instructional supplies or pay for one kilowatt hour, we'll have to skim a million dollars off the top to pay those charters or plan on paying the charters based off of student enrollment. We haven't included within the proposed local budget any increase in appropriations to cover this redirection of local funding. We're looking internally, and we've got a lot of items on the table. We are looking at some cost savings within our utilities, our energy operations. We have gone into a relationship with Synergistic, which is a company that is working full-time within our schools to help provide savings in energy costs. And where we were hoping to use those for future programs, it looks like we'll be having to cover just redirections of operating expense, delaying certain facility projects that were paid out of our repairs and maintenance budget, shifting some federal EC, some state EC teacher positions over to other federal funding, reductions in the central office, central office and child attrition department, as well as instructional supplies. And then finally, we're looking at a reduction of about 100 months of employment in clerical and custodial hours at the school level. Matter of fact, our human resources department this week, we told our principals a couple of days ago that be on the lookout, we're calling you. If you will receive a reduction next year in your number of hours per day, months of employment for your clerical custodial staff, you will start to hear, get a call this week. If you don't, hopefully, or if we can't find you, now you'll still get reduced, but if you don't receive a call this week, then you should be in good shape. But those are real. Again, we are moving forward with that. A few minutes on teacher assistance to move quickly. We have seen a reduction in the number of funded teacher assistants within Pitt County Schools since 2008-9, approximately 86 positions. This is a direct result of a reduction in state funding over that timeframe. In order to compensate for this, we've capped the number of hours that teacher assistants are employed at seven. We reduced every single teacher assistant days of employment by 10 per year. They work less, they're paid less. And we've also reduced, through attrition, the number of positions being funded and just not rehired as positions became vacant. In next year's state budget, we are looking at another $24.8 million reduction in state funding. This was already built into the continuation, the budget that rolled over to the new Bino budget. And this is before the House and the Senate ever release a new budget. So already, we're looking at 24.8 million. The hope is that there will not be any additional reductions within there for teacher assistants because that reduction equates to $423,000 for Pitt County Schools or another 13 teacher assistant positions. When you combine that with the reduction for charters, we're looking at a reduction of 23 TA positions next year. And again, we haven't requested any increase in our local appropriations to compensate for this, this reduction in state funding. Again, we're moving forward. Schools are being contacted this week. This is the number of hours per day, positions that are being lost for next year. Hopefully, we'll be able to take care of the majority of this through attrition, retirements, resignations. We'll just have to wait and see between now and the beginning of the new school year. Now, the proposed budget for next year. The proposed budget that's been presented to the county manager and to the board includes revenues of approximately $39.1 million. 97% of those revenues are through county appropriations, $37,995,000. That includes a proposed increase of approximately $2,758,000. That proposed increase is comprised of a million-dollar increase in fixed costs as well as a $1.7 million new money request. The fixed costs are, are their routine, they're very similar to what we see every year that's presented to the board, inflationary cost for benefit rates, as well as the fund increases in beginning teacher salary as well as hopefully an increase for our locally funded non-instructional positions as well. And then the cost of liability insurances, which includes workers' compensation, property insurance, liability insurance, unemployment insurance as well. Now, let's look at the $1.7 million in new money requests. That includes three components. A 1% increase in the teacher supplement going from 5% to 6%, that's $874,000. Dollars dedicated to developing our instructional staff and training, mentoring our instructional staff, that's $300,000. And a requested increase to cover a reduction in state low wealth of $583,000, which we'll talk about here in a second. I'd like to talk about the first two, the supplement as well as the staff development. This week is Teacher Appreciation Week as well as Nurses Appreciation Week. And I know quite well about both because I worked for the school system and my wife is a nurse. So I know about the nursing, she texted me yesterday and said, "Thank you for the roses that I sent her for Honor of Appreciation Day." And I said, "You're welcome," even though I didn't send her anything. So, but I got to the end of the week in order to make sure that happens, so I tried to make up for that, but.
I apologize.
There is, um, there is no more difficult profession than the teacher profession, nurses, as well as law enforcement. These are three professions that have dedicated their lives to serving all of us. And, you know, it's hard for us even to imagine what our teachers and nurses and law enforcement have to deal with on a daily basis. And we're in a situation here in the state of North Carolina where we've seen a reduction in the number of individuals and students that are going into the teaching profession. We already have a shortage with concerns to our exceptional children's teachers, a great shortage with concerns to math and science teachers, and we're also starting to see this impact our elementary grade levels. And at this point, greater than any time in probably the history of Pitt County Schools, it's important that we try to make sure that we're doing everything we can within this triangle to recruit and retain great teachers, develop great teachers, and to compensate great teachers. And it all works together in order to build great classrooms. To build great students and classrooms, you've got to build great teachers. And as a part of that, it's making sure that we're doing everything we can to train them. When a teacher comes right out of college, it's an eye-opening experience for what they have to deal with on a day-to-day basis. Probably not quite like what they saw in their clinicals, when you're fully responsible for that classroom and what they learn within their own respective classroom. And at the same time, we have to do a better job of recruiting regionally. If you look at that state average supplement, it's approximately $2,300 per teacher. Counties of pretty much equal to our size, it's around $2,800 per teacher. Pitt County is around $1,900 per teacher. To bring that a little bit closer to home, I tried to look at the area surrounding Pitt County, not the whole entire state, but just look at those counties that directly or within close proximity to Pitt. And you can see here, I've ranked them from high to low, Johnston County, Nash, Wilson, Wayne, Craven, all higher than Pitt County. And then you're looking below us. I drew a line there below Pitt, when, you know, we're not necessarily, this is no disrespect to those counties such as Edgecombe, Beaufort, Martin, and so on. I grew up in Martin County, so I think I got a pretty good education there, but, no disrespect, but we're not necessarily competing with those school systems for a science teacher or math teacher or EC teacher respectively. It's, we're looking at those Wilson, Wayne, the Craven, and Pitt because we're looking at the ability to be able to be competitive and recruit the best of Pitt County and keep them here within Pitt County. And for that reason, if you look at our teacher supplement over the last 10 years or so, it has been slow growth. We even took a step back there in those years that we had dramatic state budget reductions. We actually reduced the teacher supplement, which was a horrible, horrible lesson for our school system and something that we should have never done. You learn, you live and you learn. But we are requesting a 1% increase in that teacher supplement for next year, that's $874,000. Now, the last component of the new money request, reduction in state low wealth, $583,000. For the last couple of months, I've been going out to the State Department's website to see if there's any new information related to the budget and so that I can kind of help build that into our operations. And last Tuesday, I went, Tuesday morning, went out there and I saw the information that had been posted about the governor's budget and saw particularly the information about the low wealth allotment. And that's, it was a real humbling experience. It's one of those moments in time where your stomach starts to turn, you start to tingle all over, and you start contemplating the meaning of life and saying, "How did I get to this point?" Because what I'm seeing here in front of me is a reduction of $583,000 in low wealth funding. And the reason that I felt that way is because I know how important it is to our operations. And I've said this many times before to various individuals that this, to me, is probably the most important part of our over $220 million budget. It is a supplement at the state level and then per the definition of that allotment, provides supplemental funding in counties that do not have the ability to generate revenue to support public schools per a legislative formula at the state average level. Funding is to allow those counties to enhance instructional programs and student achievement. Now, one thing that I find interesting is that it's a legislative formula. And I just, I brought this today because I wanted to, I wanted to show y'all what that formula looks like. This is the low wealth formula for, this is a formula for about maybe 40 of the counties within, within the state of North Carolina. And I could have taped it right on down to here, but I ran out of tape and we're on a, we're on a freeze as far as instructional supplies for the remainder of the year. So, ran out of tape on my roll there. But it's the, it's the only allotment formula, state formula, that I can't calculate on its own. There's information, the per capita income, the population, the tax base, the effective tax base, and it's just not dependent, independent to Pitt County Schools. It looks at all schools collectively. And when, that information was probably last week, matter of fact, it wasn't even given an indication of why it was reducing. There's counties such as Martin County, it's reducing over 100,000. Lenore County, that's reducing over 200,000. And I know darn well that those counties haven't gotten poor, I mean, have gotten richer over the last, over the last year. But that appropriation is very important to us. And if you look at that in conjunction with county appropriations, combine the two and look at them on a per-student basis, our local appropriations plus low wealth appropriations are approximately $1,700 per student as compared to the state average, which is around $1,950 per student. Now, that's about $200 different per student. And if you look at where we've been over the last 10 years collectively, yeah, we've been, we've been below the state average. And what we continue to look at is that divide. I mean, I know that our goal probably isn't to be at the state average or even nowhere near the top 50 average, but we want to make sure that we stay as close to that because county appropriations and low wealth work together to be able to provide more instructional funding for our school system. That's why when I looked at it the other day and saw a $583,000 reduction, it was humbling because I know that means that that's funding for about 12 teachers within our school, our school system that we currently do not have the funding for. And for that reason, when presented to the finance committee of the board and through discussions with our county, through our board members, decided to add, ask that and request that through this budget proposal, even if it's not the full $583,000, if it's an additional 100,000, 200,000, anything would be beneficial, and one dime would be beneficial to helping us be able to attract as many of those teacher positions as possible. And finally, to wrap this up, the capital appropriations. We are again thankful for the $750,000 we receive from you guys for that. We are in the process of taking a look at what kind of equity projects we have out there, painting, the classroom allotments to our schools. Fortunately, we might have to be able, have to use some of these dollars just to compensate for some of the local reductions due to the charter schools with instructional supplies, but we're going to make that work. We're not requesting any additional again to make that happen, but a very routine, routine category one, two, and three budget with that. So again, we'll turn it back over to Dr. Linker for any final comments, but again, thank you for everything that you do and for the consideration of any increase to Pitt County Schools would be very grateful.
I think Michael laid it out about as clear as concise. We've been working on this with our board over the last, probably started either in January or February. We have, of course, been working on it for months before that, before we even started with our committees. So again, I'd like to entertain any questions, if we could help clarify any, anything or make some, get some comments.
Sure. We'll work around the table. Mr. Hammond, do you have any questions?
Thank you so much for such an elegant report. Yesterday, I had the privilege of attending the General Assembly and the honor of seeing the governor in person. And he said to the 100 county of Pitt County Commissioners, so the time we took to go there was enlightening for me. I want you to know, he said point-blank that the budget was not cut. The county commissioners asked him yesterday in one question, his staff was there too, was the budget cut? And he implicitly replied, "No." And today, so the state has a $400 million, billion or whatever it was, we asked for a million of it, didn't we, budget surplus. Now, today, I'm learning from you that the state did cut the budget, your presentation back here on page, whatever it is.
These numbers are based on the governor's budget, which again, as Michael said, is not final as you were told yesterday. So these are based on their speculations of where we think the budget, you know, last year, we didn't get a budget from the state until probably August.
But he said it wasn't cut last year. That was the question, I think, my ears heard.
Actually, just, I think the Speaker of the House had made that comment, but it was part of the presentation.
The governor spoke first, the Speaker second, and the President pro temp.
But we did hear that, didn't we?
Yes, ma'am.
And in his, or their definition of that, they probably would make that position because the state saw one of the largest increases in teacher salaries last year, but it was also the first time that the teacher salaries had actually been adjusted in many, many years. At the expense of that was over $100 million worth of reduction in teacher assistance. So it's like stealing from Peter to pay Paul. In the end, you don't cut the budget. Matter of fact, you might actually add money to the budget, but you're also impacting the areas within the classroom that are directly impacting students as well.
Well, that's a mixed message for the everyday resident. I think it's very confusing for parents, especially those parents who's trying to adjust. Now, today, I'm hearing that we have 700 students leaving Pitt County Schools, going to charter schools. My question is, did you look at where those, coming from Pitt County, right? Did you look at where those schools, those students are migrating from? And did you do a survey as to why or interview why they are leaving the county, public school system? And did you assess this? And is that sharing with your board, this board? Because I'd like to know, if we're going to fund the biggest, a big chunk of the budget from Pitt County taxpayers to school system, we need to be told what is the cause and effect of what's happening with the public schools. Now, when you read in the Daily Reflector, and there she's sitting right out there, how low the school scores. It concerns me that our students aren't learning or something has happened. And my question to that, and I know I'm putting a lot of questions out at one time, but maybe in your explanation, you can give me a clarification as to how to diffuse it to a simple response. Examine where you are recruiting your teachers, where they are coming from, and the cause and effect as it relates to the educational process. I'm seeing my, get all my questions. And you know, I wrote a couple of pages, but I'll just start with one page.
I can say that Mr. Cowan has worked with the Winterville Charter. We have gone through the names and the principals are actually contacting those, a lot of those parents now, just to see, you know, and a lot of it is just, you know, parents want school choice. I've been saying that since I came to Pitt County Schools, which is why Pitt County Schools is now offering a lot of things we didn't offer before. A lot of it is school choice. You know, they want those options. So, which is why we now have a dual-language program, which is now why we have an early college, which is why we're looking at a STEM magnet middle school, which is why we have the STEM labs and the virtual academy. So all those things are on the table now, and we're using those things to help parents see that, that there are additional choices. So that is the biggest thing, I believe. And again, it's, it comes down to, we are talking to those parents and the schools will be talking to parents. I know they talked to some of them. You know, in our early college, for example, we had 75 slots for kids, you know, out of all the rising ninth graders for next year. We had 250 applications. That tells us we have a great demand for an early college. So we're going to take that information and see if we can expand that to add another early college or another high school opportunity for some kids. So those are the things we're looking at. So we are looking at all that information. So we are looking at all that information, the parents for public schools, that's one of the biggest things that they share with us, um, and also with the Board of Education, that the biggest thing parents are looking for is some options. And what options are out there? And how can we measure them?
Well, my grandchildren are in Pitt County public schools.
Right.
And I have a conversation with my children about the education of my grandchildren because my parents instead a lega, a legacy of educational acquirement, and it's important to us, uh, because we had to read and write and be able to, uh, do arithmetic. And they didn't have that privilege. But my concern is, I wouldn't wanna pay extra money at a charter school when I can get a public school education free of quality. So how do you address the quality of what you deliver to our students and our grandchildren and our great grands?
Well, the, we're addressing quality every day. We're talking about quality teachers, quality principals, increasing our student expectations, but it, it doesn't boil just inside the classroom. It goes out into the community, deals with how we're relating with parents, the conversations we're having with parents. Uh, you, you can look at our schools and see that we're making growth. Okay, it's not all about that. You can, and again, if you're talking specifically about charter schools, for example, there's a lot of charter schools that have a lot, and you talked about grades.
Yes.
And have grades a whole lot lower than what we have in Pitt County Schools, and people are still going. It's about that choice. It has nothing to do with the grades. It's about that choice, which is why we are again increasing that choice.
Well, I'm gonna, I make exceptions personally. I cut in a lot of my own budget to assist my children with the, the deficit. Every year, I pay for a trip so they can be exposed, the entire family. We go as a family. And that means that I have to cut in my budget so that my children, my grandchildren and my children are assisted with educating. And there is a game along the way. Their, their, their Christmas toys are always educational. And when we are making that exception and people who don't have the economic wherewithal to do that, there needs to be an opportunity at the educational level to assure me that you are doing the best, you are examining the best, and our children throughout the county can increase in their learning process. And it bothers me, and I, I flip my pages back and thanks, Kim, for saving my notes because you said it was seventeen hundred dollars to do a school, and it takes the sheriff, I made some notes in my little piece from, from Tuesday, fourteen ninety per student cap or two to imprison the student, if I made my notes correct. And it takes seventeen hundred dollars to educate them. That's about a three hundred and ten dollar difference. And, um, I guess it doesn't take that much, uh, educational background for sheriffs than it does, or whatever, I would think, then it would need it too. But my thing of, of it is, is I'm not a mathematician, but the budget assessment is more to you guys than it is to the sheriff.
I'll also look at that over a timeframe. A, a student, if you start in kindergarten and go through twelfth, twelfth grade, that's thirteen years. If you have an individual that's incarcerated for their, uh, for a large percentage of their life, you're gonna spend a whole lot more, um, in serving that individual than you would in the early ages of development.
At some point, do we see the opportunity for out of school suspension? This is a question I asked the sheriff, and I made these notes because I see prison as a direct relationship to educational process. Do, have you made an assessment to how many children you out of school suspend compared to how many children end up in the, in the system?
Um, I, I don't know how many kids end up in the system, um, but I do know we keep track of how many kids are out of school suspended and put several, several things in place this year to reduce that number. Our long-term suspensions have dropped by probably five hundred percent. Um, our overall suspensions, out of school suspensions are also dropping by probably close to fifteen percent this past year. So we have then done several things, including spending money to put programs in place where we can keep kids in school, get kids extra school, keep them off the streets, keep them in school, give them extra counseling during the day, keep the academics where they need to be. We have done that, uh, in several places. We're looking at trying to expand that again, however, state budgets, uh, for alternative education keeps getting cut every year as well. So, but we are looking at that, and we have done several things this year as a matter of fact.
Well, thank you.
And I will bring those numbers back and share with you.
Next, next year, I'd like to be in a better position to make an assessment about some educational things, the out of school suspension. I like a report, I like a report on, on where your teachers are coming from. I spent more than six years, uh, dive, you know, analyzing and looking into that and talking with people that I know who are very well qualified in that area, but I would like very much to get some reports as it relate to the school. So when it comes, I can, I won't have to ask you so many questions.
I enjoy the questions.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Hammond, do you have something?
Yes, sir. You said we had a five hundred and eighty-three thousand dollar, uh, cutting all funding. I want to know, being a low wealth county, do you see, when you were looking at the supplements, do you see any running from Pitt County applying to work in another locale because of the supplement?
No, sir. I really don't. I, I don't, no, we have not seen that, no.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Coulson.
Okay, I'm curious, on page six, you've got, uh, Pitt County Schools twenty-three thousand four hundred and four, uh, total number, that's nine hundred and ninety-three that are going to charter schools. That does not include homeschooling and so on, but comes a total of twenty-four thousand, call it four hundred. Uh, local appropriations, because you call it local appropriations, do you get local appropriations for twenty-three thousand four hundred or for twenty-four thousand four hundred?
I'd say we get those for the lower amount.
For the lower amount.
Exactly. Yes, sir.
Okay. Of the money that you get from, uh, not just local money, because that's what you're here asking about, but the funding of a student isn't thirteen or fourteen hundred dollars. That, that may be our cost, but you got federal money, you got state money, and then you got local money. How much per capita student do you actually have to spend? I see numbers of eight thousand, six hundred, something like that.
Yes, it's about eight thousand dollars, with the, the state making up over five thousand of that.
Yeah, eighty-five hundred, eighty-six hundred, some number.
Exactly, you're right.
So let's, let's just call it eighty-five hundred. But you were saying that on the charter schools, you're only having to put out of that eighty-five hundred, if I'm hearing you right, uh, a thousand and three, four hundred?
The local portion, right.
Local portion only. Okay, but.
The state, the state portion is.
But does that not leave you more money then to, okay, how, why, how does that work?
When the, the state's gonna reduce, uh, funding for approximately, uh, forty positions, and the state dollars go along with it. So that's the portion of the state funding. The, the local dollars, um, reduce proportionally based off of the number of students that we have. So I mean, if, that million dollars has to go right, directly back out the door too. I don't know if I'm answering your question directly.
Well, but, but I, I guess one of my questions is, is that million dollars not funded at the state? What you've painted a picture here is that you get so many dollars based on the twenty-three thousand four hundred Pitt County students. And of that, you're having to siphon off one million dollars plus to go to the charter school.
That's just the local component.
The local component.
Just the local side.
What about the total fund?
This is the, this is the state side, and this is just a summary of the state side. This doesn't include transportation dollars that are lost because there's less, uh, students driving on the, riding on the bus. This doesn't include the dollars that are lost from at-risk funding and disadvantaged student supplemental funding because they're not included in the formula. These are just the major component of the reduction in state funding.
Your big, long sheet you have, uh, it's convoluted logic, I don't understand it either, is it, it's, it's.
But you can see.
But you know, you also painted a picture that, okay, you're, you're losing some students, but you're gaining. So you really only lost about four hundred, something like that. And of that, you painted the picture, you're gonna lose so many positions. And I was really struck when you talked about clerical and custodial. Do the schools get smaller?
No, it didn't.
You have to sweep more feet, sweep.
No, it, no, it didn't.
More square feet.
But your, your point is, is exact because we have a, an allotment from the state. The technical name for it is called non-instructional support. It is, we receive a certain dollar amount for every Pitt County student to fund clerical and custodial salaries. The sto, school did not get any smaller, but just because there's less students within that school, the state's gonna allot us less dollars, which means we have less funding to put towards a clerical and a custodial, uh, salary. And I'd go one step further on the low wealth. We spent a lot of time, Dr. Linker and myself, breaking down the school performance grades. You remember the A through Fs that came out, how bad they were? We took every single school system across the state and every single school, and clearly you can see that those Ds and Fs are coming in low wealth counties, low wealth counties. And this is a time where the state is at the same time reducing the funding to the low wealth counties. It's our, our position to the state is you're disproportionately negatively impacting low wealth counties at a time when you have, in your own grading system, has found that there is a disproportionate negative impact as far as the grades are concerned. It makes no sense, uh, in rationale, but those are the, the cards that we have been dealt.
It strikes me, um, there's any number of unfunded mandates the state puts on us. Indirectly, you're really talking about an unfunded mandate.
Sir.
Uh, they cut your money, you're saying, and therefore you're coming to us and, and saying, is there anything else that we can do to help you out? Now, we, we spend something like thirty-five million dollars, thereabouts now, I, I think is the number. How many local school teacher positions does the county fund?
Approximately fifty.
How many other positions does the county fund?
Uh, I'd say at least a couple hun, two to three hundred.
Okay.
Would you ask that one more time? Because that's the question I'm gonna, I wanna ask. The, the number of teachers that are funded and the number that are not teachers but are custodial or secretary, is that okay for me to? Not just the difference, tell me the numbers.
It's approximately fifty teachers, and I wanna say somewhere around two fifty to three hundred non-instructional positions such as clerical, custodial, facility services, um.
Additional teacher assistance.
At least additional teacher assistance.
And that's gone up over the past year or two because we worked very hard a long time ago, we were, it was even larger than this.
Oh, my gracious.
To get that reduced, and we're back up. So just, I just wanted to hear those two numbers.
And even with that said, we, and I'm, I'm sorry, but even with that said, it's going back up, but it's still not anywhere as near as it was when I first came here.
Oh, I thank God for that.
Oh, man, it is, it is, it is extremely lower than when we, when I first came to the school system.
Okay, so when the, the governor and the legislature struts around with their suspenders popped out about how they haven't raised taxes and they've saved money and everything like that, and they've done all these wonderful things, whether it be Democrat or Republican, I don't see a whole lot of difference, not really, not in the big picture, not if you're truly honest. Uh, it, it looks to me like they have directed an unfunded mandate to us, fifty teacher positions. It's whose responsibility by the Constitution is supposed to pay for teachers?
State.
The state, not the local government. So we got fifty positions that they have, that we, I'm gonna say, we have collectively looked at and said, we're willing to fund this because we wanna see smaller class sizes, we wanna see, uh, more STEM teachers, we wanna see additional programs. And I liked the early college, and I won't fuss at you again this time, I'll wait till probably next year, about vocational, which I think is still way left behind. I'll just make a brief comment that I'm, I know things are happening, but it's disappointingly slow. The early college is still directing kids towards college. You know, we got college graduates right now, can't find jobs. But we have technical positions that you can't find people. And we have kids dropping out of school because we mandate twenty-nine hours. The state only, I think, asks for twenty-one. If you had two systems, the vocational and the other, and you really focused on vocational, I'm convinced you'd have less dropouts. You would have more kids that would be learning a career, they would be graduating from school, being able to do the basic math, reading and writing. I'm not talking about writing a technical paper, but at least be able to read and comprehend. I'm telling you, I hire people that can barely read, and I have a high school graduation certificate, can barely read. And, and this is down in Craven County, where the company I manage, but I don't know that it's a whole lot different here.
Well, there's a lot of employees that from Pitt County.
But, but my point is, is that please look at vocational, please put some effort towards that. And as far as these other, these other positions, I think the people of Pitt County need to recognize that when they see the legislature and the governor strutting around, know that they have actually burdened us to try to pick up the pieces.
And I'd like to, a couple of things I'd like to expand on there. First of all, is that I've been saying this last several years, that our two boards, our two entities need to be like this together in what you just said, that the tendency at the state level has been to shift responsibility down to the local level. Last year, it was the, 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 um, attempted workers' comp and bus tort claims that would have been put about a million and a half, a million and a half, uh, unfunded mandate on Pitt County Schools, as well as all the school systems, to go back to their county to, to ask for assistance. This year, building to the budget, and we ain't talked about this, is a reduction for drivers' education. In the state budget right now, they've basically eliminated funding for drivers' education, but still require the mandate on school systems. And at some point in time, we gotta draw a line and say, and say, take us to court, take our funding, we just cannot do this. You cannot continue to shift burdens and play games with the numbers and pushing those mandates down on local schools.
Well, I find it interesting that the legislature refused to move a bill along that would not allow the school system to sue us county commissioners, but you can't sue the legislature.
Yeah.
Isn't that interesting? Isn't that really neat how that works?
I'll take it so well.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I don't have any more questions.
And one more thing, and I know that the, the PCAE came before you guys the other day and invited you out to your, in the schools. And Commissioner Coulson, I really would like for you, if you have the opportunity, I think your school is South Central, they are really looking forward.
I plan to go, I've not notified them, but I plan to go on the twenty-first.
They really look forward to having you to speak specifically about what you said right there, and ultimately, hopefully, we can work together to come up with some plans for the future.
Thank you.
Commissioner.
Joint work sessions.
Yeah.
The county's school system and the county commissioners.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, first, I want to reaffirm and acknowledge, uh, our county superintendent and our county finance officer, I'm sure all of you are aware of, but recently received an award from the state level, uh, putting you both of it at the top of your category, if I remember correctly. I want to commend each of you for that, and it speaks well whether we are low wealth or whether we are high wealth. Our students in Pitt County are fortunate to have administrators and, uh, finance officers directing their monies for them. The, what is the scale for your teacher supplement in Pitt County? From, from what low to what high?
A low of two percent if you are not yet proficient, and up to five percent if you are deemed to be proficient.
And that's how you, you calculate this nineteen twelve?
Exactly.
And, uh.
Now, there are schools out there, because of their economic status, that have, there's been a waiver on the, on the non-proficient requirement, uh, to aid in recruitment, but, uh, but that's for the majority of the, of the staff. Now, as of, uh, a few years ago, we didn't even provide a supplement to teachers that had less than three years of service. That's where the two years for non-proficient and five percent, uh, two percent for non-proficient and five percent for proficient was put in.
You probably answered my next question with that remark, but, uh, your, uh, what percentage would you say of your teachers do not receive a supplement?
Well, uh, given the fact that they was, all receive at least a two percent, they all a hundred percent do, uh, I would say less than ten percent, probably less than five percent only receive two percent.
Well, I think I asked you what your low was. What's your high supplement? All right, I think I asked you what your low was, what's your high supplement in the county?
Five percent.
Y'all have met with the county manager, present your budget for this year, that which you have yet to hear. You've had an opportunity to review what the county's recommendation has been, is that correct?
Um, we've, we've heard, uh, I've had a lot of time.
Mr. Owens, we, we met with the superintendent regarding their request. At the time, it didn't include the, um, low wealth funding cut, so it was like a two-point-one million dollar request, so you had about a million in fixed costs and a million plus or in the, um, new costs.
So they haven't seen what we've got here about what your recommendation is? Is that right, Scott?
They've only seen it publicly as it was, came out in my presentation Tuesday morning.
Well, my final and last question, I was gonna ask you this. Uh, you've asked for a certain number of dollars to be spent for education, the county manager's gonna recommend to this board a certain number of dollars for education. That, that has not been fulfilled, that was in your request. What do you see as an irreparable harm if you do not get that money? Understand my question?
I think in the, but the low wealth dollars, I mean, that, that's, that's, that's one-hundred percent teachers. Every penny in that, uh, in that allotment goes to higher teachers. You know, I think we get total five million, eight hundred thousand, some change this year, next year it's five point one million. You average, you know, twenty teachers per million, you know, that's a hundred teachers or so, we're losing twelve or thirteen teachers. Um, you know, we'll have to figure out, and, and even this year, when we gave the teachers their, the principals their allotments, we didn't even include that. Um, we're hoping that there's some wiggle room in there, we don't have to cut out twelve additional teachers or reduce those positions. But at some point, whether we, we use fund balance for a year, he hates me when I say that word, um, but at some point, if that number drops, I mean, if that number drops, I mean, that's, that's the bottom line. If, if, if that number is decreased, then the amount of teachers you can purchase and the teaching positions you can hire just has to be reduced.
Does the General Assembly establish each year what your low wealth, you have that schedule?
Yes, it goes, it comes, that comes every year.
It's been established for twenty fifteen, now we're talking about budget for fifteen, sixteen.
Right.
So you really don't know what that low wealth is gonna be from Raleigh at that time?
And next year, it could go up five hundred thousand dollars.
How much did, how much was it last year, do you remember?
Five point eight million in total.
Okay, thank you, gentlemen, appreciate it.
Ms. Ward.
I just have a few questions, but thank you again for an excellent presentation and, uh, without a lot of drama, you have still presented the facts, which sometimes we have to fish into to understand them. One question, the number that says new charters on page six is seven hundred, is that the number of students from Pitt County and is that a projected number?
That's a projected number because the enrollment, the enrollment in, um, Winterville Charter and Ignite Charter is actually higher than the five and the seven hundred, I mean, the five and the two hundred, which equals seven hundred, but, you know, we just, we just picked seven hundred because I had a...
So you actually have the names of these people who are going to enroll in those two charter schools, twenty fifteen?
Let me, let me spend just about thirty seconds going into that. Uh, back about a month and a half ago, uh, contacted the individual for Winterville Charter, which is located out of Michigan, I believe, and said, you know, for his purposes and my purposes, we both need to be sharing information because his dollars and my dollars are kind of commingled right now, I mean, they need to be separated. So, uh, I asked him for information on enrollment and he, um, provided me the names of approximately five hundred and sixteen students that would be attending that, um, that charter.
Okay, can I just stop right there one minute? I think that number are the people that have attended these workshops and all of them, I mean, I don't know, anyway, go on, that the charter has held.
That's, that's the number...
Not that they have actually signed the contract.
Those are the number, that's the number that they actually offered a spot to.
Yes, that's what I mean, not that the students are not committed, is my understanding, but they have shown interest and they have said, we'll put you there.
Because once we went through this process, I had Student Services look up every single student and tell me where they were going, currently going to school, and this doesn't even concern the two hundred plus that would be going to Ignite. Then we started supplying that information out to the schools and the, and the school principal would come back and say, well, this parent says they're not going. And I'm like, that might be, that would be true. But if they don't go, then they'll just fill that slot with another student from somewhere else.
And how is that num- I mean, or do we have that spread throughout the county, kind of equally? Is it going to affect a school that may be overcrowded presently or low test scores present, I don't know, I'm just trying to get a, my head wrapped around this because I've been reading about it and I even attended one of the meetings and kind of sat back in the background just to kind of listen.
I would say that based off the location of Winterville Charter, that the schools most impacted are those in the vicinity of that.
Okay, because the parent has to do the transportation.
Exactly, that's right.
And that is usually, a lot of times, is the deciding factor when the parent signs that saying, I'm gonna send the child there. And I don't know about this ratio compared to other charter schools in the state, but I just feel like, and I'm kind of praying that this number is high, okay?
I do too.
Excuse me, I know you do, and I'm just trying to kind of get people thinking a little bit. Um, okay, no, no, duh, 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 okay, the positions that you're gonna be looking at cutting this year, I know that those, and are they all teachers?
The vast majority of them are.
Okay, but are they all teachers?
Not, not all are.
Okay, um, it, can you give me an idea of how many are teachers and how many are...
We have thirty teacher positions that are being reduced due to charters and we...
I mean, you all said that you were going to have to cut.
Mm-hmm, that's, yeah, basically...
Is that the one, is that the number you're talking about?
Exactly, yes, yes, ma'am.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, um, about twenty-three teacher assistants. Uh, when you add in the local component to the, um, the, um, the clerical custodial, probably the funding for between four or five positions there.
The non-instructional fortified.
And let me just say, those, those reductions have either been sent out to the school at this point in time or in the process of being done this week or early next week.
Okay, how many positions, because I know a lot of times when we reduce personnel at the end of the year, it's, we have retirements, we have people moving or whatever other reason, none of those people are included in that number?
Now, um, we hope to take care of the vast majority, all teachers should be taken care of through attrition.
Sure, certainly.
Now, with concerns to clerical custodial, that might be a mixed bag. There might be some that, uh, that retire or resign, that the position's not filled, or unfortunately, we might reduce, um, an individual's hours by an hour per day.
Yes.
Just so they can have a job.
Right.
The more difficult component of this is going to be the teacher assistance. That is, uh, that's an area that we're going to have to closely monitor because I, in a normal year, we don't normally have that many turnovers in positions around twenty, twenty-five. We're hoping that we can, uh, we can make this work again through attrition and reduction in hours individuals, and even those that maybe could pick up a bus route.
Right, I mean, and I realize that that's what you've done in the past, and I kind of want you to share that so it won't look like we're just chopping people off at the knees as long as the jobs...
And the, and the hard part of that is you get to a point, Dr. Linker said this before, that you get to a point where if, for example, if we reduce days for everybody, that, basically, a lot of these individuals, clerical, custodial, hadn't had salary increases in years, and the cost of benefits have continued to increase, the cost of food has increased, and it's getting harder and harder and harder to live. And then when you start to cut back, I mean, so, and in the, in the, in the hopes of trying to save people and you reduce hours, you might be hurting their livelihoods even, I mean, so there's a balance that at some point in time, we're gonna have to...
I understand that, and we're, we're dealing with the same thing in our county, uh, with our county employees have stepped up to the bat, I mean, to the plate with their bat, uh, over the past few years when, what, five, six years, I don't know, that we haven't had raises either or they haven't. The other thing that, do we have any, let me see if I can figure out how to do this, okay, higher supplements. I know that there's a lot of research out there. I know that there are higher education institutions who have done research based on the number of their graduates that, you know, because many of the ones who have large colleges of Ed, I know East Carolina does this, they follow their students for at least three to four years until they get tenure. I know they do in elementary Ed anyway, and I think they do in most cases, to see what happens to them during that time. And usually, the supplement, the research that you read, if a large supplement is attracting a student, and they do that at job fairs, I know I've been to them, I've seen them and I've listened, but most of the time, those really high supplements that are worth moving for, which going to Johnson County and leaving Pitt County is not one of those that I would put out there, no offense to Johnson County, but if you're going to go to Charlotte or Raleigh, you're gonna double your living expenses. And many of our teachers are very bright and smart and they understand that they can live here and have an apartment and make a payment on a car with their supplement and their state salary, but that, you know, I, I think the supplement part, it would be wonderful, you know what I mean, but, and I'm not sure that the research out there shows that that takes people away from school systems, so that being said, that's okay, that's just my observation based on information that I have.
And, and, and to be upfront, that is why it's just, it's just one component.
I got you, sure.
There's a lot of things that go into making an employee happy.
Exactly.
It's, you know, it's, basically, they're, the way they feel respected by their school system.
Good leadership in your schools makes them big.
Exactly, good leadership in school building, and so supplement's only one component of that bigger picture.
Yes, thank you.
Mr. McGovern.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I'm gonna thank you for that excellent presentation, you did a very good job. As you know, education is our number one priority as far as this board is concerned, and to prove that, I think each year we have increased, uh, the funding of education. And I was happy to hear that, uh, there's a reduction in in-school suspension, uh, and I was, I was curious to, to know what percentage of that reduction as compared to last year has that been, could you, you have an idea?
Final numbers aren't in, um, for out-of-school suspensions, you know, we still have another, another month to go, but the last I looked, uh, we were actually, I was actually tracking and looking at lots of, specifically middle schools, are we keeping our kids there? Um, and I, I can note, some middle schools have cut it by fifty percent, some by ten percent, but those numbers are decreasing. Um, so that's something we, you know, I, I took, uh, took that on as a real challenge. Plus the long-term suspensions, um, I shared with our Student Services Department, my first year here, I've never, never seen as many long-term kids suspended, um, ever. And I think this year, uh, la- last time I checked, it was three. Uh, the year before that, it was seventy-something, so, um, not sure where it is, I mean, that number does increase toward the end of the year, unfortunately, um, but, uh, we are certainly doing what we can to keep that number there. You know, if I had another hundred thousand dollars, I could create a place for these kids to go to school and give them additional opportunities, but those are things that we're trying to create. But we, when we get those numbers at the end of the year, I'm more than happy to bring them back, and I think I'm usually gonna come back in August or September and, and I will share those numbers with you.
Great, and the, uh, graduate, graduation rate has, uh, has improved. How, would, how does the graduation rate compare to the surrounding county, counties in terms of, do you have any ideas to how our graduation rate compares to that?
Right now, we're still just slightly below the state average. We have three schools that were way above the state average and two right, just, just right at the state average, and one just a couple of percentage points below, so, but we're right at the state average. I think we were within a couple, a couple hundreds or a couple tenths. Um, so, but, you know, that number, you know, as we were talking yesterday in our budget meetings, you know, Pitt County schools several years ago made a commitment that that was gonna be a focus and a priority, and that's something that I obviously support in continuing those efforts, and, you know, this year, or the end of last year, I think it was eighty-two point four, I think the state average is eighty-two point seven percent, and four years ago, I think Pitt County was in the low sixties. So that, that's, it's a dedication for the Board of Education as well as the administration that was here and the principals.
I was reading, uh, an article, uh, and also hearing on the news that the charter schools, uh, that's, that are scheduled to operate, it's not gonna operate this fiscal year, they're not gonna be opening this surrounding area, uh, for what, for some reason. Uh, if that being true, how would that impact the financial status of the school system, of the county school system?
Could you repeat that question, I'm not sure I understood?
The charter school?
Oh, oh, mm-hmm.
Are not scheduled to open this fiscal year?
We are hearing that, we have not been officially, you talking about the, the smaller charter school, Ignite, or, we have not been given official word on that, but we...
If that's, if that's true, how would that impact?
If you look at the chart, uh, which way was it, this way, am I going the right way? Well, there's two hundred kids that would be back in our enrollment, that'd be back in Pitt County schools, so that would then obviously decrease these numbers, uh, state allotments, uh, that's state, whereas local, so there's some local numbers, that would certainly affect those numbers, and bottom line is, this number would decrease, this million dollars that we're trying to take out of our local budget now would decrease.
And honestly, what the, against, we'd have to burn that bridge when we get to it, but what we'd probably have to make the determination to do is to use that for some one-time funding because the impact is only delayed.
Right.
So we would put those dollars back into the classroom in the term, in, in terms of one-time funding so that we don't have to keep going back. The, in life, the worst thing is uncertainty. And we want to minimize to the nth degree the uncertainty, and it's mighty uncertain right now. So we don't want to take away, add back, take away, I mean, so, but it would have a positive impact if, at a minimum of one year.
I could also say that the, the new list for charter schools that was approved by the State Board of Education, I believe, last month came out, and there were no new charter schools scheduled in this area. So, and when, again, that goes back to us trying to be proactive and coming up with options for parents and kids.
And my final question is that the, um, bullying in your school system, you know, that has been, you know, a very deep concern of mine and certainly across, across North Carolina and the nation. Uh, what, what kind of funds are you, uh, allowing to, for bullying prevention in our school system because there's so many suicide people who are, are, are being hurt seriously? What are we doing in terms of Pitt County school to prevent this deadly, I think, problem for our students?
If you're in the schools, you can see that every school, starting with the kids, are taking it, uh, taking it firsthand, and they're working with it every day. Um, yeah, as far as with the funding situations, we hire extra psychologists, social workers, and you can see, uh, uh, school counselors, those are positions we're putting in there. We also have our Student Services, we have a contract with, with, um, I'm forgetting her name right now, who, who goes in and works with our, in our schools and does bullying prevention. We have programs constantly. We also have, uh, part of our Title I program is parent involvement, which is addressing bullying as well. And it's, it's a tragedy and it's one that I, I unfortunately is, you know, countrywide.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Mr. Garris.
Thank you, uh, thank you very much for your presentation this morning, as usual, you did a very good job. I don't want to, uh, beat this charter school thing to death, but the seven hundred students that you're projecting to be in the, the two charter schools, are all of those seven hundred students from Pitt County?
I'd say the vast majority of them are, I mean, I, probably ninety-nine percent of them are, there might be a few that would come from the outside.
But if someone in Lenore County wanted to send their child to this charter, either one of these charter schools, they could do it.
They could, um, they could fill out the application and put their name into lottery.
If they were accepted?
Exactly.
Then, if they were accepted into the charter school, would that be part, would they count as a number of dollars that, okay, fine.
That'd be Lenore County.
It would be from the, from the, uh, receiving county or the...
Sending county.
Sending county, excuse me, sending county, okay. Charter schools, how badly do they hurt public education in Pitt County?
Right now, it's probably, it's, well, it's less than one percent of the students, I think, uh, it's like point three percent or point four percent currently, currently now.
But funding, operational, because the, it's not a direct relationship between the dollars you transfer and the negative impact on your system, correct? So, i- is, do you have any kind of an assessment of that? You know, I, I know people want choice, and I understand that, I'm all for people having choice, but, uh, I'm a little bit concerned about what the negative impact is on public education in our county.
Well, in general, the, and I don't know if I have a personal, I mean, my board... Well, in general, the, and I don't know if I have a personal, I mean, my board may kill me, a personal problem with charters. You see, you stepped away, huh? The problem I have is the rules that are set up, okay? Charter schools don't have to take every kid. You know, by not having, by not supplying lunch, by not supplying transportation, you are eliminating 50% of the students in Pitt County. And that's not just Pitt County, that's every school system that does that. You can, you know, you can also go the other way. You can go, you can be a, truly a Title I charter school, and you're going for those, the Title I students, so you get extra dollars. And it depends. And also, when the company that's running it is in Minnesota, you know, for-profit, you know, that's just, that's, that's my issue. Plus, you know, you talk about the, the calendar issues, you know, I've been fighting for years to get the calendar back to local control. And all I hear from the General Assembly, as you said, is, "Local control, local control," except for the calendar bill, which we're going to keep it the way we want it. You know, so that's one of those arguments I've never quite understood. But the charter schools have to, they can start pretty much anytime they want. But I can't. I've got to start on the Monday closest to August 26th, and end on the Friday closest to June 11th. I mean, that's the rules that are put on my, on my plate.
Well, if we have to allocate public dollars to them, it would appear to me they would have to apply by the same rules that the public system applies, has to.
As far as testing and curriculum, they follow those. But as the other rule, they can, I mean, there are charter schools that set up and say, "You have to have passed a certain grade at, a certain subject at a certain grade to actually get in."
Yeah.
I mean, could you imagine if we did that in Pitt County?
Right. The other observation I have is this low wealth funding, the $583,000 that you are asking for, the, I am very much concerned that Raleigh has reduced that allocation to Pitt County. But I'm also concerned about Pitt County assuming that $583,000, because that would be the state government passing it down to the local level, and we assuming that, which to me could encourage them to send more dollars down to the local level since, you know, we assume. So I'm, I'm concerned about that. And that is one of the things that we at the, at the state level, our association has been emphasizing to our legislators over and over, "Don't send us mandates from Raleigh." And that's what that is. So we need to be lobbying our legislative team very strongly that we can't afford $583,000 in Pitt County, and you multiply that by 100 counties. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Mr. Farland.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for this excellent brochure, which I was scanning. It has stimulated some thinking and subsequent questions, just two. I was elected to serve the citizens of Pitt County in District III. In looking at this, I see GR Whitfield is the only Pitt County school in my district.
I'm sorry, I don't know exactly where all the district, but that would be out in Grimesland and?
Grimesland, Simpson, and then all the way down 10th Street to ECU.
Well, then you would have, would that not include Eastern and Walcoats?
Oh, it would.
Yes.
Oh, okay. Because I was a little puzzled that I was invited to visit Aiden, which is clearly out of my district and in several other commissioners' districts. In any event, Aiden Middle School, it says, "Support is regularly provided for students in the academically gifted," which I get. My, my son was in one of those programs at one time. "And English as a second language." I have to ask, isn't English a primary language?
For a lot of students, yes. However, when we have lots of students in, in Pitt County, for most of our students who are in the ESL program, English as a second language are Hispanic, and their primary language at home is Spanish. So, so that is the English as a second language student. So we, of course, we work with them to get their English where we, where they need to be so they can function in our society.
I'm concerned with anything that makes English an optional language in state government in North Carolina. That's all I have. Thank you.
We appreciate your presentation. I've got just a few quick questions. I'm a product of Pitt County schools. I don't know if y'all want to advertise that very much, but I am. And probably Farmville's favorite graduate. But, um.
In this century.
20 years ago this June, as a matter of fact, we had a reunion. What are one, with the reduction in students, the estimated, I guess it's estimated 900 when you collected all, what's the net offset? Because I know there's going to be more students coming in, so did you say 400?
We're projecting, otherwise, we would be projecting somewhere around 220, 225 student increase on an annual basis. That's about the normal growth that we would see.
That, I mean, that's, it doesn't sound like a lot, but it is a lot, because, I mean, that's about a third of the school I graduated from. And so I wonder i- if the 12 teaching positions, to maintain them, would that be solely for smaller class sizes? Because when you're losing essentially a third of one of our rural high schools, you have to ask who they're going to teach.
Right. Well, I think a lot of things to look at. I mean, if you, we know in some cases, a large chunk of these potential charter school students are coming from one or two schools. And proportionally, we can reduce teachers at those schools because the kids won't be there. Now then, the question goes back to, what about the custodians and clerical and things like that? Because you've still got to run the school. But in some of these places where you're losing two school, two kids, five kids at a school, I mean, that's, you can't cut a teacher position.
Sure.
So that's, that's the situation that we're running into. If you're at, if the charter school is in, right on Fire Tower Road, you know, a place, you know, school that's farther out, you know, Bundy Sog, Far, Northwest, Bethel, Pactolas, they may only be losing two or three kids. So that certainly doesn't allow us the opportunity to cut a, a teacher.
I don't want to lose any of them. I just didn't know what the concentration was. So actually, the, the fact that it's more of a spread-out concentration causes you a bigger problem.
Right.
And when it comes to the teaching assistance, and just, and this is a question that just, it just seems that teacher assistance are going to become a thing of the past, based on the way the state is going. And my concern is, is very similar, or it mirrors Commissioner Garris', is that every time we, as a county, take on a responsibility of the state, it never goes back to being a responsibility of the state. And they have certain constitutional obligations, which, as Commissioner Coulson mentioned, you can't sue the legislature. We can sue each other. And in, and in the end, only our attorneys win that we hire, and what we saw in Union County. So I do want to say that we appreciate the relationship with our school board and, and your staff, because that is not necessarily true in every county, especially a few that are somewhat close to us, just to our west. One quick question, too. Title I federal money, do they go, does that go to charter schools as well?
Yes.
It does? And the full amount follows the student?
The dollars are going to follow that student.
Yeah. All that money outside of, you know, we, the money from, from Pitt County, of course, we send. Everything else comes direct through the state, directly to the charter school.
And we required, excuse me, to send all our records, all our testing, because you have to do all of that to identify a Title I student or to identify, I mean, I think it's just free lunch now, I'm not sure. But, but there's still a lot of stuff that we do that, does all of that go with these students?
Yes, because, we're not talking just Title I students, we're talking about students with disabilities.
I'm talking about everything.
There's a lot of, yes.
Do they have to furnish special education?
Yeah, they have to provide those services. If they are, if they receive the fund, they receive the students that are eligible for that funding, and they have access to that.
But they don't have to say that our charter school will accept children with disabilities? Is that, I mean, that's my question.
Depends on the rules they put, you know, again, it comes down to.
But they could say no.
You can't say no. But by putting in certain, certain rules, not, you know, transportation, child nutrit, or child nutrition, lunches, putting, there are, like I said, there's a school that says you have to get a, it used to be a four on a math test in eighth grade to actually get in.
Right.
Okay?
But they can't do that as far as?
They can do that, but when you do that, you're eliminating, in that case, you're eliminating probably 90% of the potential kids, which means.
Yeah, but I was thinking about disabilities, not.
When you go to that school and look at the kids at that school, there are no students with disabilities. There are no ESL students, okay? So they are eliminating.
And that's what, that was my question.
That's how they get around.
That I think needs to be out there also, not necessarily that we're going to deal with that. But I think there's a lot of things about a charter school that are very exclusive that people don't understand.
And to add to that, whereas an EC student, Title I student might be accepted and start attending a charter school, it probably won't be long before they find that even though it's a charter, they're not going to receive the same level of services. We provide a lot of services to our students with disabilities that they would have more access to, so they'll probably find themselves back in public school.
That's what I'm saying, is that I don't think the public realizes that charter schools are really, sounds inclusive. We give state tax money, and everybody's tax money that's coming to the schools goes to that charter school in some way or another, whether you have children in, in there or not. But it is exclusive in some situations, just like you just said, if nothing else, but transportation, nutrition, and exceptional children. Thank you.
Also, to pose a scenario, because I don't know how this would work, a student that's in a charter school for a certain amount of time, once they hit a certain deadline, the money stays with the charter school, whether or not the child comes back to public school?
The state dollars?
The state dollars.
Will stay with them after, what, 40 days, 20 days?
First couple of months.
Now, when that, so when they hit that line, and then they come back to public school, and that state money does not fall, if that is replaced with another Pitt County public school student, does that state money also go with them, or is it?
That would stay with us, too.
Okay. So we, we keep that after a certain amount of time? All right. I think that's pretty much all I've got. Again, my, my only hesitation is taking on more state responsibility, because, like I said, we never, never get it back. And at the same time, I really think the teaching assistants are just going to go away. And so I think as a county, we're just going to have to decide whether or not we're going to fund them at some point, and just have a county system of teaching assistance, because they, they're trimming them back each year. And most of that is the low-wealth dollar reduction is the teacher assistance, correct?
Low wealth is all, is all teachers.
And, but at the same time, the hesitation on taking on state responsibilities, we also don't want our kids in our school system to suffer, because I can tell you, in my profession, I don't deal with a lot of high school graduates. We deal with people who didn't go through. And I think this increased graduation rate is going to reap us benefits down the road in that area of crime and other things. But that's all the questions I have. Are there any final follow-ups for Dr. Linker? Thank you.
Thank you.
I think we ought to have some education and some board workshops.
Sure. We're going to take a quick three-minute recess while the next group gets ready. All right, we're back, and we're going to have our presentation from our emergency manager. Mr. Lee.
Okay.
It's all yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. I do come before you this morning, very proud of the organization that I represent. I think you've already heard from the school system, I think you've heard from the sheriff, and how important they are. But I would also like to say how important we are to you and the citizens of the county. When we look at Pitt County Emergency Management, we look at having four different divisions. We look at 911, EMS, and Commissioner Williams, I will try, be sure, any acronym I hit could give you the full example of it. Okay? Excuse me. But 911 EMS fire in the actual emergency management. We have about 41 full-time staff members, and about, right now, 21, which we try to stay around 25 part-time staff. Excuse me. But that's only just a very small part of our organization. Because if it was not for our volunteers that we have in EMS and Fire Department, which account to about 950 people, there's no way we could do our job. So as I go through that, keep that in mind. These are individuals that some are actually paid in the EMS side, but they volunteer and give of their time because they have another full-time job. A lot of you Fire Department members are truly volunteers, and they give of their time to do their training plus response. So, being sure I can operate this, I'm going to jump right into EMS. When I talk about EMS, this is going to be for the county and county only, and not for anything with Greenville, okay? So if you have any questions, please let me know. We have about 200 personnel that provide EMS, and we provide it at the paramedical level. We have an EMS coordinator who actually works mainly with the EMS system of the county. You'll see here that, I've showed you a graph of 2012, 13, and 14 of actual calls that we've had. And just for care, there's a bad glare on this screen. We had dispatches in 2012, 13, and 14, but I'm going to show you basically dealing with 14, but you can see what the level has been. Of 13,200, 7,500, transports, no transports. A lot of times EMS will respond to an individual who just wants to be checked out, maybe had a motor vehicle accident, and they say, "I don't want to be transported." They sign a release form, and they don't. And then a lot of times in a response, they're canceled. This could be because another EMS unit was already on a call, they may be responding to Greenville to assist them, they have a unit that clears up, and somebody else is closer, so they cancel. And then 75 other, these are other events, standbys, different events that they may do throughout the year. When we look at activity for EMS, average call to dispatch, how many times do you stop and think that when you pick up the phone, or citizens of the county pick up the phone, and they dial 911, what takes place? Do you ever stop, or do you take for granted that it's going to happen from that point that you pick up the phone until somebody arrives at your home? Again, when we go back and look at the schools and the law enforcement side, I think we see that. So much of our work is done behind the scenes. So from the time somebody calls to a dispatch, the average for EMS is 39 seconds. A lot happens in that 39 seconds. Average dispatch to en route, when that EMS unit has received that notice of that alarm or that call, that within a minute and 29 seconds, they're pulling out of the station on the road en route. Average response interval from the time that they get that call and they've checked on en route, within about eight minutes, on an average, they're at that person's house. Now, when we look at that, that's the average of about 10 minutes from the time somebody picked up that call, call, a phone, to a time that somebody's on the scene, providing the care that's needed. That's pretty good. But understand, this is an average. When we go back and look, the FICs report asks us to do fractals. But it says still that 90% of the times, within 16 minutes of that call, there is a person there on scene providing EMS. How many hours? You'll see right at 11,500 hours were given by EMS. Average utilization rate is 13.11%. When you look at a 24-hour day, 13, well over 13%, the average, there is a squad rolling. And that ranges from 4% to 20%. EMS budget. Squads submit their budgets to Financial Service, to Duane and his people. They compile those, and they are reviewed by staff. Financial Services presents squads' requests, along with EMS billing and supervision and district operations budgets, to the Oversight Committee. This was done back in March. So when we go back and look, there are three different entities that we have to look at as far as the EMS budget. That's support to the squads that we contract with, the eight nonprofits, the two county-operated squad, then the actual supervision part and billing portion of it. And with that, we're staying within a 4.6 cent tax rate with collections. The next one. If you can read this, you're better than I, but if you look on page 21 of your budget outlay that was given to you earlier, that is where you should find that spreadsheet. And this is a spreadsheet showing the adopted 14, 15, and the recommended. And you'll see we're staying fairly flat, because we do not see any increase. So I'll try to answer any questions at the end, or any word that you would like for me to. Basically, the Oversight Committee makes the recommendation to you to accept this budget as presented, and it will fund the squads at $428,400 for every, all of the eight nonprofits, except for Fountain and Bell Arthur, who asked for a little less, and for the capital outlay portion of that project, $350,000, which was the same as last year. And that's. dollars, which was the same as last year, and that's the purchase of one new ambulance, one ambulance remount, one new ambulance, one QRV, and a defibrillator. I got ahead of you, I'm sorry. So let's talk now about the Fire Departments. When we go back and look at the Fire Departments, that is handled through the Fire Marshal's office and he works with the twenty volunteer departments within the county. We have a total of seven-hundred-and-fifty-eight members as recently. Now, that fluctuates a little bit. There could be some additional people that come in. A few years ago, you'd establish rural fire service districts, so now we have full, twenty full service districts where there's taxation. Seventeen rural departments provide their own fire protection, but we also look and contract for the fire protection of three of those rural districts with towns being Aiden, Bethel, and Farmville. One of the things, to do, go back and remind you again, that these individuals require a minimum of thirty-six hours a year training. So you can just look at the amount of training they put in there, not counting what they do in responding to calls. As far as the activity, they responded last year to twenty-five-hundred calls. Their average dispatch, and this is when 911 received a call and they dispatched, two minutes and forty-eight seconds that they've answered that call. So now we've got a group of volunteers that majority of those stations are not manned, that you have somebody answering that call in two minutes and forty-eight seconds. Their response time from the time they receive that call to the time of arrival on the scene of seven minutes and fifty-nine seconds. And on average, it takes about fifty-three minutes to actually handle that call. So that whatever group of people there are on that scene for right in the hour. Our lease funded. With the fire district process, you appointed a three-person commission for each one of those districts. The Fire Department submits a budget to them based on the amount of value that's been established for their district. And that three-person commission looks at the individual Fire Department budget and recommends a tax rate to cover that amount. So it's up to you, as Commissioners, to accept and approve that tax rate for each one of the districts. We also do some general funding for the departments of ten thousand dollars for each rural district, ten dollars for each fire dispatch of the twenty-five-hundred. So that money is set aside. Workers' comp for the actual firefighters. And there are, this year, we've been doing truck contributions. There are five different departments asking for a truck contribution of ten thousand dollars. When we go back and look at the truck contribution practice, this is not, is not a written policy. It was a practice that was established many, many years ago, actually to the point that we tried to find something in writing, never could find anything. So I went back and called my counterpart, Bobby Joyner, and said, "Bobby, can you help me out with some history?" And Bobby said, "No, this is, this is just history. There was never a written policy adopted. This was just something that was done during the budget process. So we're trying to continue with that same practice." And that practice was the contribution of ten thousand dollars towards the purchase of a engine, pumper, or tanker in a twenty-year period. So that would be a twice application, twenty thousand in a twenty-year period. Now, I will say that there's a lot changed. Cost of trucks, back in the days this policy probably started, that the cost of a very expensive truck was probably somewhere between sixty, seventy thousand dollars. That that same truck today could very, very well be three hundred thousand. So it's changed a lot. Just for the fiscal year sixteen, sixteen, fifteen, sixteen, the town of Aiden and Bethel, both rural, provide rural fire protection for those rural districts, have asked for that contribution. You'll see earlier on that this practice was not for town departments, but we're contracting with Aiden and Bethel for that rural fire protection. So we've included that into that budget this year in that request.
Can I interject?
Yes, sir.
That being that when the county began the practice of the ten thousand dollars every twenty years for a pumper, then every twenty years for a tanker, at that point in time, through our research, I don't believe any of the rural fire departments had a tax rate or had the authority to set a tax rate that was part of the county's rationale for putting ten thousand dollars up. Just wanted to bring that out.
I will also, too, say most time about this time of the year, and hopefully would have it, most of all of these twenty departments actually apply for the OSFM, Office of State Fire Marshal's Office, grant, Department of Insurance. And normally it's awarded about this time of the year, so we can come back. So they do go out and look for matching grant money. Have you heard if they've been approved yet or not?
Fifteen.
Fifteen, so it's close. And so it's there. And also just to recognize that we do have three members of the fire service here with us. EMS was gonna be here, but there's been a complication. They couldn't, Sam Tyson, my other staff members are not here today because they're preparing for an exercise that we're working with, the department. So they're downstairs working.
Is it all right to ask, you said we could ask questions? If they get that ten thousand dollar tanker thing?
Go ahead.
If they get the ten thousand dollars approved and they get the ten thousand dollars. And although they didn't buy a tank this year, are they allowed to keep that in a slush fund or reserve fund? Or what happens to the ten thousand, ten thousand dollars if they don't?
If they do not, then it rolls back into the general funds because...
Basically, we budget the ten thousand dollars for the squad who's asked for it. They have to buy the truck, then we provide the ten thousand dollars. So we don't disperse the ten thousand dollars until they bought the truck. The other thing I wanted to bring out, I think Noel hit it lightly, was we've got two squads this year that are asking for a truck outside of the one per twenty years. Aiden is asking for a, a truck for a substation. So this would be an expansion of the unwritten policy for that substation. And I'd asked the chief, Sam Jones, to make a written request, and he did. And we said we'd bring it before you as a board. And with the town of Bethel, Noel, what was the situation with Bethel? They'd already received it?
No.
Is this additional or?
No, they're making plans for a purchase of it this coming year.
Is this in compliance with the policy, unwritten policy?
Other than the unwritten policy, did not fund any municipal departments. But we do contract with that municipal department for that rural fire protection of that Bethel district.
'Cause I've looked at the trucks in, in my district and, and when I happened to go and I looked to see how, you can't tell by looking, but the most saddening thing is to have a fire and getting in the truck doesn't operate. Now, that's horrible.
There are a lot of things that each department has to go through. Truck has to be service-tested every year. There's a lot of things. But you normally, and when this policy was set up, the life of a truck was expected at twenty years. And that was where the replacement value was.
Let me just interject one more time before we leave fire. So we have included the cost for five trucks, even though two are outs, are an extension outside the, the policy that you've had in the past. We did tell the, the fire community we'd bring this before you. But also, I just want you to realize that, and I can understand to a degree, with the substation concept, obviously they have equipment needs. And in Aiden's case, the substation isn't there yet. They're wanting to buy the truck first and then eventually build the substation. So I just want you all to realize we're, we're expanding, we've included it, we're expanding the interpretation of the policy, so we'll make sure you're in agreement to it.
So what you're doing is explaining a policy that we have, not a policy, a practice, that we have had for years. And I don't, and you're not recommending any kind of change to that, that policy.
Well, basically by including in a budget, we're, we're, we're expanding the practice to more frequency, I guess.
Okay.
For a substation in a town.
For a substation and, and the municipality. And I really don't have a problem with either one of those because the substation would be like a new fire station. And then if these municipalities, these smaller municipalities are providing the unincorporated area protection, then I, I would feel comfortable in treating them the way we treat all the others. So I, I have no problem with supplying them.
Ms. Ward?
And I'm assuming that adding the substation might reduce the insurance that we've spoken about previously?
Yes, ma'am.
That the citizens have to pay.
Address that in just a little bit.
Okay, that's fine. I just think that's, you know, there's a reason to me to fund that for the substation. And I think that, so you explain that, Lee. Thank you.
Okay. As you will see, the request that's come in from that three-person commission will have a tax rates that will range from two dollars, I mean, two cent, two and a quarter cent up to nine point four cents per hundred-dollar value. And that is basically the lower tax rate you will see will be the more populated and industrial areas to the higher tax rate of being a less populated area. There are three departments that you'll see in a spreadsheet in just a few minutes that are asking for a tax increase. And they will be Aiden, Falkland, and Farmville. And you'll see that the Aiden is a small increase, and their rationale is for the help pay for the new truck they're getting in, plus the building of a substation. Falkland has asked also for a two-cent increase, which their intent is to build a substation also. As they build both of these substations, what we're gonna find is areas that may not have a tax, an insurance reduction. They may be at a class ten, that they may actually come to a nine, or may even be able to enjoy whatever their ISO rate is there. So there'll be a reduction in the insurance. So those two. Farmville's increase is small, and also they're preparing towards the purchase of a new truck. They did not request a truck this year, so I'm thinking that they're starting to build some capital money towards the purchase of it. And in the spreadsheet that you're getting ready to see, also, you will notice that PACTOLIS did not present a budget, and county staff looked at setting the tax rate as what it was last year. So the next slide that you see is the actual spreadsheet for that. And if you're having problems viewing this, it is on page twenty-two of your budget pass out. Again, I don't know how, how good you're able to see it. It is sort of small. But you'll find it's the estimated value of the district, the current tax rate, proposed rate, how much money will be levied, and what their budget request was for that taxing authority. As we move next, we'll start talking about 911. In 911, we have staffing for four shifts and it's twenty-four-seven operation. We have twelve telecommunicators, which currently right now, we've had one recent resignation, and we have three in training. We have four shift leaders, one per shift, two supervisors who split a shift, starting maybe ten in the morning till ten at, at night. And they're there to help fill in for somebody being out sick. That is normally considered sort of your heaviest peak time, so if they need to sit in, and also for holiday and personal leave time. So many times, one of these supervisors will actually be as a regular telecommunicator, sitting in one of those chairs because somebody is being accommodated for holiday time or personal leave time. We have a training and a quality management, QM, quality management officer and the manager. What do they do? They monitor eighteen different eight-hundred megahertz Viper and seven-hundred megahertz radio talk groups currently. They listen and answer ten E-911 phone lines coming into the center and six admin lines, which on those admin lines, you have fire alarms, medical alarms, heart of hearing, TTYDD, that type call that comes in. So that's what they're doing at this time. When we look at the activity, last year, they received one-hundred-and-fifty-six thousand four-hundred-and-forty-six calls. These were the number of calls that came into that center. When you go back and you look at how do you staff, they normally try to look at an average of what is your busiest hour in a period of time. So just to show you a little bit, busiest hour ranges from twenty-eight calls per hour to one-hundred-and-twenty-seven calls. And what we're trying to do is maintain at least three telecommunicators there at all times. Busiest hour averages from fifty to sixty-five per hour. So if you go back and look at it throughout the year, you know, the busiest hour, you can expect a phone call. Now, one of the things I think you need to remember on those phone calls, once that call comes in, it's not just a ring and it's done. It takes time now to handle and work with this call. And then to dispatch whatever resources. When does this busiest hour come? We can never predict it. When we go back and we look at the Walmart shooting a few years ago, they received in a sixteen-minute period, forty-seven phone calls and over fifty radio transmissions. And they had three luckily seasoned telecommunicators. And some of them will tell you now, they still have flashbacks from that. They also provided twenty-three thousand five-hundred-and-eighty-four EMD calls. And Commissioner Williams, this is emergency medical dispatch protocols. So when someone calls in and they have a medical issue, they start to ask questions so that they can determine what is truly needed. Out of that, they had seven-hundred-and-ten PAIs, pre-arrival instructions, that from the time they took that call, they did not leave that caller until there was a paramedic on site and taken over. They can run from anywhere from, you saw the response times, to up to twenty minutes depending on how large an area that they may have to go in. And these PAI calls are for patient not breathing, patient unconscious, patient choking, and childbirth. One of the things that I also will mention, too, that anytime they have a patient that's in cardiac arrest, it's called an echo call in the EMD, it's graded out. There will be two EMS units dispatched plus a Fire Department dispatch to assist in CPR with that. We have found this has been a great response. We've seen the survival rate increase in Pitt County with this policy. Also, to give law enforcement credit, they're also carrying defibrillators. And so they're monitoring, and when they hear that call, if they're in that vicinity and can respond, they also respond to. When we talk about dispatches, we talked about phone calls. 911 in two thousand and fourteen dispatched just around eighty-four thousand five hundred calls. To break this down, and we've already talked about the number for EMS, thirteen thousand two-hundred-and-twenty-three, twenty-five-hundred for the county fire. We dispatched for the Winnebago Town Fire Department, which is not part of that twenty, five-hundred-and-thirty-four. Greenville Fire, just Greenville Fire itself, ninety-one twenty-five. For Greenville EMS, sixteen thousand one forty-two. And for all other calls of those will be law enforcement transfers, where we transfer all law enforcement calls that come in for Greenville PD, the Sheriff, Aiden PD, Farmville, Highway Patrol, ECU, Invited PD. So any law enforcement call. They have to stay on the call long enough to get information. And when they transfer the call, be sure that that law enforcement agency picks up and they do have direct contact. All right. Moving on. I think in the CLP, there was a capital that was to be determined for the CAD. The CAD is Computer Aided Dispatch, and it assists the 911 center. And actually, as that phone call comes in of how it's displayed to show the address, who the responders are, all that information starts to display. We released that RFP back, I think, in March. It could have been last February, but March, but again, whenever you approved the, us to release that. We received five responses from that, and we developed a team that's... We received five responses from that, and we've developed a team that's been working that from nine-one-one and the M I S, because as we're moving forward with any type of communications, we're finding it is more I T-based, I T-based as we go along. So we've got to be certain that we have the support of I T or M I S and Mike and his group. Currently, what we've done, we've reviewed all these R F Ps, and just to tell you, I think Scott mentioned it earlier when he gave his presentation, they range from around four-hundred-thousand dollars to about one-point-two million dollars. When you see that wide range, you very quickly ask, are they giving me everything I want in it to four-hundred? Or are they giving me more than I want at one-point-two? So it's being reviewed. Currently, we have a team that's going around to local areas where these responses have come in and looking at those vendors that the applications actually.
Were you with them then?
Sir?
Were you with the group then?
No, sir. I'm with the other group, but right now, we've got two from I T and two from nine-one-one that are going through those. It's like business. They've got another one scheduled next Wednesday in Wilson, so they've been going around. After they've looked at those different locations and how that vendor-specific product works, we're going to ask for demos from those companies to come back in, that we can actually have a demonstration from them, plus truly get down to the specifics of the technical questions to be sure that what, they bid it at four-hundred, four-hundred thousand, we're getting what we need versus the high part. After that, we plan to take that back to the nine-one-one board for them to say how much they would, could, or fund of this, and then we would come back to the commissioners to recommend a vendor for that.
When you have the demonstration of the equipment and everything, who's invited to that?
That will be, the demonstration will actually be for the nine-one-one employees of how that system works, and the I T department of how the servers, service switches, and how all of it in the background makes it work.
Does the, are the chief, captain, what are they? The head of the other group? Because when I was campaigning, they talked about communications. The head of the various facility are part of the demonstrating or left out? That was my concern.
Commissioner Williams, right now, they are not planned. Could they be? Yes, but I think when we go back and look, this is the information that's being received in the background so that the nine-one-one can properly dispatch the correct agency as quick as possible.
This is separate apart from, in a lot of degrees, the radio and paging project that we're, it's on a separate track. I mean, this does correspond to it, but in and of itself, the software is really more nine-one-one based in the center itself with the users compared to the radio and paging communication issues that are being addressed through the Kimball study and the group of individuals you appointed to work with staff and the consultant on that project.
Well, the reason I raise the question, because if they don't understand the full communication there or within or whatever, you may not be able to cycle out in your, for your department as you should.
We'll keep that in mind.
Okay. And just as a note, that the CAD R F P will be a mix of funding from the nine-one-one board and general fund allocation. The next one for the nine-one-one center is a backup center. Currently, we utilize the backup center with Greenville PD, and that is still ongoing. But as we have found that the growth that's taken place, that Greenville PD's location is not large enough, and in looking at what we need to do, we've started trying to identify additional locations. We have identified two different locations at this time. We're studying both of those locations to see which has the best offerable solution, and we're developing plans for equipment and the actual installation for that backup center. This currently, right now, should be implemented by July one, two thousand and sixteen. But as you remember, the House Bill five-twelve, if approved, will delay the actual implementation, but say that you must have a plan and substantial progress in implementing. So I think Janice will say, we feel encouraged that this bill will pass, or hopefully, and so we're moving forward with that as far as the backup center. The next one, which has been a hot topic right now, is the nine-one-one monitoring of tac channels. This has been a request from a few fire departments, but mainly now has come actually as a recommendation to you from the Fire Association. Currently, right now, nine-one-one, and there, we have actually twelve different tac channels that would need or could need to be monitored. That would be eight on the seven-hundred megahertz side of that, plus four from the eight-hundred megahertz or Viper side. And tac, Commissioner Williams, is basically tactical channels. That's just, it's abbreviated, that's not actually an acronym, it's just abbreviated. Currently, right now, we do not feel that we have the staff to be able to actually efficiently monitor those tac channels at a consistent level. We feel that the telecommunicator, once they go to that, has got to be dedicated to that only task, because that information that's coming from the field is being passed there. We can't stand to take a chance of missing a call or some type of traffic. So again, this is an issue that we do staffing surveys. We feel that what we really need is have a third-party staffing survey completed to say, where do we really stand with staffing here to be able to accomplish these different things? Scott had mentioned, through the communications program, we're looking at Kimball, working with Kimball. I've also asked if Kimball could come back with a scope of work and an estimated cost of what a nine-one-one staffing survey would cost, and what they could actually do. So this time, I've asked for that information from Kimball to bring back to Scott and to you, but I have not received that. I was hoping to have it prior to today, but this recommendation that come from the association base was saying, the recommendation is to the commissioners to do whatever's necessary so that nine-one-one can monitor tac channels.
No, you said you don't feel like you can do it. That's a lot different than knowing you can't do it. I think a few months back, I asked if we could just try it and, you know, and see whether, did we try it?
We did not try it. I did informal surveys among my telecommunicators.
Well, surveys are subjective and based on, like we talked about, feeling. It would be a lot easier to do it and know. And because, I mean, because what we're talking about is spending money on a survey, spending money on staff that we don't even know that we need based on a feeling. I mean, if you can't do it, you can't do it, and that's fine. But until you try, you don't know.
Commissioner Williams, if you'd like for us to, we will go ahead.
I would like for you, I asked you to two months ago.
And when I went back and done the informal, and again, I understand surveys are subjective.
If you don't answer them. And so that's the point, is, and I'm not trying to be ugly, I'm just saying, if we, we're in a tight budget, the sheriff needs millions of dollars, the school system needs millions, and needs a couple extra, a few million, and, you know, every five-hundred thousand dollars, and I doubt we can do a five-hundred-dollar study through Kimball, it's going to be more than that. Y'all can pay me five-hundred dollars and I'll go sit in there and see, but we don't know until we know. I mean, it seems like it'd be pretty, pretty elementary process, say, hey, we're going to start monitoring tac channels. Even if we did it, pick the busiest departments, two, three of them, and say, when they're on tac, we're going to try to monitor it. If you can't do it, because here's the thing, we're talking about missing calls, when it comes to the tac channel stuff, we're already missing them because we're not, we're not monitoring. So I don't see any value added to do a hundred-thousand-dollar survey or how much they're going to charge us, when we could for free monitor it ourself and figure it out. Because if you don't have the staff, we want to support you. But I don't want to spend thousands of dollars on a survey to tell us something that we could have already known just by doing an exercise over the past couple of months. I mean, and the fire departments understand that we're in a, in a trial phase, that we're going to attempt to monitor the tac channels, so, and we could, you know, reach out to them and say, hey, don't get too wound up. If you're not being monitored as closely as you want, because other calls came in because we're just seeing what we got for staff. And ultimately, it sounds like to me, we really need to work with the municipalities and maybe have a one general, big dispatching center for everybody in emergency services, because you call nine-one-one and you need the police and you're getting transferred over to Greenville PD or somewhere else, that's a delay you might not have, that's a different conversation. But yeah, I would definitely want us to start, at least pilot it. Pick one, two, or three departments.
I was looking around from a communications manager and telling him to go ahead and initiate it, because we've got.
He felt the temperature going up.
So he may have.
That's a good supervisor. He knows when to be wary.
It was like when Michael stepped away from.
Right. He did a whole vanishing act on him, Michael couldn't get that far away. But try something, I want measurable data, not just, because you know what a study's going to take? Six months and a hundred thousand dollars, and that's six months additional already still not doing what we want to do. I trust our dispatchers, our firemen, and you to be able to figure out whether or not we can do it without having to have a third-party come in, run some more money out of the county budget to somewhere else over something. I'm not a big studies fan, you may have been able to tell by my comments. But I think something like, because this is fairly elementary, I would think, either can or you can't, and you'll know, you'll have a metric that you can gauge, because if a Walmart shooting situation happens, obviously, you're not going to be able to monitor anything anyway. And just like the twelve different tac channels to monitor, we can't give you enough tac staff out of the next three budgets to be able to monitor twelve tac channels if they're all going on at once. And you're talking about, we're probably not going to be meeting anymore after that anyway, if all that's going on. So I would like that to happen. I would like to see that, because one, it's free if we do it ourselves. And two, it gives these fire departments, at least the ones that we're piling, the busiest ones, an opportunity to be monitored, and it gives our dispatchers a chance to really just say, I don't feel like I can do it. It lets them say, hey, this is why I can't. Don't tell me you can't until you can tell me why you can't. And that's what I want to see.
I will go ahead and initiate that, Commissioner Williams.
Thank you very much.
I wonder why it didn't happen.
The following page on the slide presentation was nothing more than what we would be looking at in asking for a staffing survey, and so I think that's all pretty much elementary of what we, you know, you definitely would be looking at. I do say, I think that the, you've looked at some paid holiday time that will help on staffing issues. It's not going to eliminate staffing issues, because just for our small department in telecommunication, it takes right at eighteen-hundred hours for somebody to fill in for holiday time for the nine-one-one. That's a full-time person.
I'm not even completely disagreeing with your assessment that we won't need more staff. I just want a metric I can gauge and explain to the public. Because it may not be what we need, I mean, it could be something part-time or an overtime opportunity to work a flex shift during the busy time.
And Commissioner Williams, one of the things that we've got to be sure that we're able to communicate back to the department, that we start to monitor that tac channel of how you want to know for a fact that we're too busy, we can no longer monitor, so they do not now anticipate that we're monitoring and we're no longer, because that communication's got to take place.
Right, absolutely. And hopefully, whatever chief is there is monitoring, and if you got to tell them that you're going to be off the tac channel, they'll hear you.
Now, for a mayday call, and that's when you would actually have somebody lost or down, then all efforts go into that, because that is the true emergency at that time.
Absolutely.
So at this time, I ask for questions.
Since I'm already on the roll, I just, one more thing.
Now, wait a minute.
Ask me your permission.
You always start either left or right, and now you're starting in a circle.
You can tell who I think runs the means, and I'm not asking her for the floor. But one thing, and this isn't even directed at you, so you can relax for a little minute, feel the air conditioner on you. I don't like unwritten policies. I think we need to start developing a policy on these fire trucks, and I think that even if it's, I think a high year would be, what, six? Wouldn't that be a normal six?
I think five is a very high year. I think you normally look at about three.
So, and even if we can't do it this year, I would like to be able to increase it this year, but even incrementally, if we went up trying to get to twenty-five or thirty-thousand dollars over the next five or six years, bumping it up a little bit, but have a written policy, and then we reevaluate it every few years to see if it's increasing that, because the offset is becoming, almost, I mean, almost to buy the truck, the paperwork's going to be ten thousand dollars, so we're not offsetting much, and we've seen the willingness of the departments to go up on their tax rate. Some, but at the same time, especially when we're looking at the expansion, this is, at least in most areas of the county, we're rural, but we're not sparse. And so we need those substations, and that's just, it's a growing pain. It's just one of the problems, but we can't use a nineteen-seventies gauge on what we're going to buy a fire truck for, because the, I mean, the technology that's in them now, you couldn't, you could buy three trucks for when we decided to do ten thousand. So I'd like to see that, so that's.
And let me just comment a little bit on that. When we found out there was no practice, I mean, there was no written policy, somebody said, well, put it in writing, I'm like, no, 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 no. That's not even going to go there, we're going to have to follow the practice. Also, the association, Fire Association, at their last meeting, has developed a committee to look at revamping that truck contribution that could come back, and I think they've even got it in their mind, not only from a pumper tanker, but for a service truck or what's known now as an equipment or rescue truck.
It'd be an either or, not a both, you mean?
Daddy.
Well, I don't want to expand it that we're going to have, you know, ordering ten trucks a year, I don't think that's the mission of it, and.
I think what we need to look is what that kind of recommendation's going to come back from.
We'll take a wait and see on.
And then we can look at that and try to work with it.
I'd like for us to consider doing something, even if it's still within unwritten, just, you know, at least bump us up to the nineteen-eighties.
And I know one of the committee members, you know, said, there was no way we could get it in place for this year, but try to work it on for the budget year of next year.
Well, that's a reasonable approach, and I appreciate that as well. Does anyone else have any other questions? Mr. Farley?
No, I think you were preaching to the choir there when you were going on before. I think everyone here is in agreement with you.
Garris?
I don't have any questions, just to comment. I'd like to, again, express my appreciation for all of the firemen and EMS, for the fantastic job they do for this community, and I am especially appreciative and thankful of the volunteers, because the volunteers, we could not afford to pay for the services they render, so I really appreciate that. Thank you.
Mr. Gold.
I'm just concerned about the fact that we want the communication to be on par in terms of the firemen having this communication system operatable, and so we're hoping that this continues to improve as we move forward.
Just real quickly, appreciation for all of these areas that we have spoken to today, and I cannot help but think back to where we were with EMS, and then when we got the dictate from the state to work with EMS, and how long it took, but where we are now, and how effective the Oversight Committee has been. And Mr. Garris, you served on that committee for many years, and we're at such a positive place, and with our, all of our volunteers in all areas, fire and whatever, and also the independence of the Rural or Fire Association. I've always admired that, and that most of the time, all the time, when they have come to us for anything, they have generally helped solve the problem before they get here, and I appreciate that so much. Thank you.
Mr. Owens?
Moment about addressing what Glenn was alluding to. I guess the minutes will reflect, if we had minutes back then, but this ten-thousand-dollar concept wasn't a yesterday thing. If I recall correctly how that originated, there was people in certain areas of the county, volunteers, Mr. Garris, that started their own fire departments, and that ten-thousand-dollar figure was arrived from the county, kind of as an incentive to assist the local people who bought their own trucks, built their own firehouses. Am I right, gentlemen? And they did that, and that's how that arose, you arrived at that, but the point that you're making is well-taken. I think today is a different day, financing is different, cost is different, so we need to be in a posture to accomplish what you were talking about, Glenn. Further from that, I might be a little stronger this morning than you were, but I wake up every morning wondering if somebody missed a call last night. For months and years now, we've been dealing with this radio situation, if you want to call it that. call it that. But I do, I wake up every morning saying, has somebody missed a call? It is a total failure on my part as a county commissioner, when we spent five or four million, whatever it was, to not get what we should have got. I know, Jimmy, you were on the group that did that. We were promised we were going to get things. We didn't get it. But I accept my responsibility because maybe I should have been a student enough businessman to look into it further than that. But that is in the history. Scott, I hope that every morning, you and Noel, you wake up every morning saying, is there something I can do about this problem today? And let's solve the problem. Thank you.
Mr. Coulson?
I agree with Mark a hundred percent. I'd also like to thank Eastern Pines. On a personal level, about three years ago, four years ago, they actually saved my wife's life. You performed a very valuable service to the community, and I thank you. No more.
Ms. Williams?
Thank you for your allowing us to ask questions and putting in their little explanations for my own personal support. I appreciate that. I'm concerned about the rural area. When I was campaigning, one of the very vocal fire department was Pac Tolas. And I appreciate your entertaining me in your office and making the clarification. But like Mark, if a call is an accident, it means that a life is at stake, and that bothers me tremendously. And the problem of response time is good out in the rural area because they have to travel long ways for life and death situations, sometimes further than others. But I happened to witness an emergency at Pac Tolas. And I think the staff was really professional and great in witnessing, having witnessed that I got to see it. But they had on site at that time, because I know you all were not there, a rescue truck and the firemen. And I've never, a cooperation of staff was just great. I mean, you could stand back and see the teamwork, and I appreciate it. And it wasn't long before the sheriff showed up. So it was a very educational opportunity for me. But I do want to agree with what Mark said. Communication is important, very important. And that was one of the overall concerns of the, and EMS units, was getting a call and communication. And that was important back when the flood was. So whatever we do, we need to consider what it, the say with the communication. And I don't know what the point Glenn was making, but it seems to me he had a good presentation as far as, why didn't you? I asked Coulson, I said, I wonder why he didn't do that? I mean, when we could just put it into the process. That sort of sent up an antenna in my brain, you know. I guess it put me on my soapbox, Charles. But things like that, responses like that, does send up a curiosity with me as to why staff doesn't respond or address. I might get an education that I desperately need in making a decision. Thank you so much for your presentation, and I hope your staff don't get too mad at us up here. But we, sometimes it does help when we're looking at the whole gambit of things, when it comes down to dollar cents and the residential complaints. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hammond? Do you have any questions for Noel, Mr. Hammond?
No, not right this moment.
Thank you for your presentation, and I just echo the sentiments of the commissioners and thank the volunteers and our EMS and fire staff because they make a big difference for our county residents. And we, like Mr. Garris said, if we had to pay the staff, we wouldn't be able to afford it. So we appreciate their sacrifice. Thank you. Next, way of human resources. Florida, you're scheduled to go to eleven.
You got one minute.
I can do it.
She can do it.
I can do it.
It's done.
Chairman, this is the presentation we're going to have at your workshop. Our system here was human capital, and also we have two new commissioners on the board that we might want to review some of the concepts of the pay-for-performance, merit, holiday pay, and whatnot. So that's why I've asked Florida to come and kind of give a quick, brief review on some of these programs.
All right.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good morning.
Good morning.
And as the manager mentioned, I'm going to probably give you some of the same information that he gave you on Tuesday to help you understand why we're asking to reinstate some of these benefits for our employees. And I'm going to start with the word "study." Commissioner Way. But Pitt County initiated a program, and we presented this information to you back in November. So for our new commissioners who weren't here then, this may be helpful and useful to you, and I'd be glad to answer any of your questions. We started this, our study program back in two thousand, so that we review all county classifications. The last full review prior to two thousand was completed by an outside agency in nineteen ninety-four. What we did was we formed a committee to help us look at the positions throughout the county, and those positions, employees came from various departments in the county. We also solicited a consultant to come in and help us with the initial review of the classifications and to establish an ongoing review process. And what they did help us do was create a salary survey tool, which is what pretty much everybody does who conducts a study, and created a review questionnaire for us. And this, we use that questionnaire when somebody internally, they think a position has changed, and we need to look at what's changed. So what do we do? We study one-third of the county classifications each fiscal year. To date, we've had three, four cycles of the review process. Year one, we started off with the clerical administrative, and you can see the years we've studied that, and this was the group that we looked at in the current year we're in. And the good news is, we did not find any that needed to be changed. So that tells me we're doing something right. We're staying up to par with that. Year two is the technical and law enforcement positions, and you can see the years that we've looked at those positions, and that is a group we'll be reviewing again, starting in September. So this fall, we'll be looking at that group of positions again. And then year three of the rotation cycle is our management professional positions, and we did those last year. And the next time we look at them again will be in sixteen, seventeen. But we do this every three years. And I do want to mention with social services and public health, because they're in the Office of State Personnel, or State Human Resources as it's called now, they do review those classifications as needed. This year, like I said, began the fourth rotation cycle with the review process, and we looked at the clerical administrative. And as I've mentioned, there are no recommended changes. And when I say that, that means our base salaries are within the market of our goal, which is to stay within five percent of the market goal for base salaries. So we're talking about the base salaries of our positions.
And Florida, that's compared to the existing salary the employee may be on compared to the base salary of each of the positions. Just wanted to clarify that.
And what we do is, we pull in from the other counties. We look at the base salaries of those counties, and where we study is counties that are close in population size, to Pitt County, and hopefully budget size, to Pitt County. And we also include the City of Greenville and ECU for matching positions. So we do look at all of that. And one thing I do need to stress is that what we're looking at is not the actual salaries of the employees, but the base salaries of the positions. So this helps us when we're recruiting. So the classification study process is dealing strictly with the classification and not the person that's in the position. So that's the big difference in the two. But pay-for-performance, I'll get to that in a minute. And like I said, we've utilized it over the last ten years, and we've had minimal changes over the last three years, and we think that's because we're conducting that study consistently. And so each, these classifications are going to look, get looked at every three years. So we're going to review them every three years. And like I said, without an ongoing review process, if we wait ten years to look at all of our positions, then when the time comes, we're going to end up with some issues that we'd be coming to use, so we need some adjustments. So we think this three-year rotation is very, very important. And I do also want to point out is that when you do approve cost of living raises, that cost of living raise goes on top of the base salary. So our base salaries rate are increased by the amount of the cost of living rates. And, you know, bottom line is, the market reviews and the adjustments do allow us to be more competitive in the market because we don't want to start out behind when we're trying to recruit for positions, and then our salary is much lower than other counties or our competitors. Now, any questions on the classification piece? Okay. Pay-for-performance, so this is our opportunity now to raise the salaries of the employees. This is what we use pay-for-performance system for. And the manager talked the other day about the performance appraisal process. Each employee is required to have a performance appraisal at least once a year. If they're a new hire, then they have it within six months of the time that they come in and begin employment. The goals and objectives are set at the beginning of the fiscal year, and we changed this process. And I do need to mention that the consultant, when we solicited their help, also helped us develop this performance appraisal tool. One of the chief complaints we had from employees was that the performance appraisal was graded after the fact. So they went a whole year, and at the end of that process, they were given a grade on this is how you did the past year. We changed the process, and we now give them the goals and objectives at the beginning of the fiscal year, so they have time to work on those things and understand what is expected of them for that whole fiscal year. So at the end, there should be no surprises. You know, if the goal was, whatever the goal was, either you met it or you didn't. So there should not be surprises at the end of the year. And we think employees, although it's a grueling process, we do believe that it's been great for our employees. We use that performance rating at the end of that fiscal year to determine whether or not a person is eligible for the pay-for-performance. So, and I think the manager did go into that the other day. With the pay-for-performance process, it was designed to be fiscally responsible program, which means we're not giving huge raises. You know, they're either going to receive that one point two or two point four, and that's as high as we're going. We use it as a value recruitment tool for qualified employees because when we interview someone, their question is, how can I progress on the pay scale? How am I going to get a raise? Because that's important to people who are coming in. It's a valuable retention tool. How do we, once we get them here, we've got our base salaries competitive. Now that, once we have them here, how are we going to keep them here? And it costs us a lot of money to recruit and retrain. Our turnover rate, I think, currently, right, last year was twelve percent, thirteen, it was ten percent. We average about ten to eleven percent. So, but it does fluctuate. So, but we want to keep them once we get them. We did suspend, the pay-for-performance was suspended July one of two thousand and eleven. So that means employees have not progressed on the pay scale since June thirtieth of two thousand and eleven. When they were progressing, they were progressing at either the one point two, which is a one increment, or two point four, depending on where they were on the pay scale. So if they were not at the midpoint yet, they could progress at two point four. Once they hit that midpoint, then the progression slows down, and they're eligible to receive a one point two percent. And the manager also mentioned that we're asking this year because we think the fund balance has increased over the years, and we knew we couldn't ask before where we could ask, but it just wasn't feasible. So, and we can't say enough, you know, in the last few years, staff have had to do more with less. You know, we've had less staff. We did, went on hire and freeze, so employees were stepping up, and they were doing an outstanding job. I can't, you know, say that enough. Everybody was pitching in, helping. If an employee, if one department had staff that we can do without for a little while, they were being sent to another department to help out. So we were doing everything, the manager was doing everything he could to make it work. With the pay-for-performance system, it does reward work performance, so the employees get, you know, an opportunity, if they shine, they're going to get a raise, hopefully. And with our retention. And I must say, you know, the economy recovering is a great thing, but unfortunately for us, it opens up other job opportunities for employees to move on. You know, get out of government work and go private or whatever, so that does happen. And the big thing for us is with pay-for-performance is salary compression. This pay-for-performance system in the past helped us stay away from our salaries being compressed. For example, we've not given, people have not been able to progress on the pay scale since two thousand and eleven. So we have people who were hired in two thousand and eleven, and probably some hired two months ago, and they're at the very same place on the pay scale. Terrible morale issues, employees, because I'm working beside the person who was hired, you know, last, two months ago, and I was hired in two thousand and eleven, and we're at that same place on the pay scale. So that will relieve salary compression. We're going, you know, even with reinstating it, we're still going to have a small amount of salary compression because we have those years that we were not moving people on the pay scale. And it does keep the actual salaries of employees competitive in the job market. Any questions on that piece of it? The other thing the manager mentioned was a certification incentive program. And I'll start with the Sheriff's Department program. You know, it covers the sheriff's staff of deputies, detention officers, and their telecommunicators. The program was established back in two thousand and two, and the guidelines for that program was set by Sheriff Sanders. So they have to get that letter and confirmation from Sheriff Sanders and turn it on to us before the raise is implemented. It does require years and years of experience, work experience, and training for these officers. And it does reward the employees that seek higher education and/or training and development opportunities. And it also affords those people who get that certification an opportunity to receive an additional four point eight percent salary increase. So that four point eight would be in addition to the two point four if you reinstate pay-for-performance, so a person could end up getting seven point two percent raise if they're eligible to receive that certification next year. The, and I'll move on to building inspectors if you don't have any questions about the sheriffs. That program was established in nineteen ninety-five. These certifications are issued by the North Carolina Code Officials Qualification Board, and the good news is, to date, all of our building inspectors are at level four. That means they have at least a standard level three and four areas of inspections. This means that they can work more efficiently, so he can send one inspector who can inspect, if it was a new construction, they have the certification to inspect each area of that new construction. So that is a plus for Pitt County, and it makes scheduling that much easier. He doesn't have to, yes, sir?
Yeah, Florida, I like this certification program for the sheriff, and you explained that nicely, and that does really need to be reinstituted with all due haste because listening to Neil, this will definitely help his retention right there, and it's merited. The officers have to work and meet these standards, get the certificates, and a four dot eight percent increase is nothing to, you know, to scoff at. The building inspectors, not so much. It's my experience, once they get fully certified, to go work in Mecklenburg or Wake County.
Well, the good news, I think, we've been able to retain the ones we have for a few years. They've stayed with us. So we're doing something right in Pitt County. They've not left us yet. So, but the more, and you're right, the more, the higher the level of certification, the more marketable they become. So we want to make sure we can retain them, so this is important for them. So, and pay-for-performance helps because they're moving on the pay scale and getting raises. So, and I've mentioned that piece. And any other questions on the inspections program? And I'll just mention holiday pay just briefly. To date, and Mr. Lee mentioned it before, employees now, when they work on holidays, bank the holidays and take them off at a later date. This does create a scheduling nightmare for some of the departments. They can't always find time to get them back off. We have a lot of employees to date that have a lot of banked holiday hours. So we, it would relieve some of it. I know he's asking for six days, which is about half the holidays that we earn, so that relieves them only having to figure out how to let them take six days back off. And the big thing that I really watch is that if they are paid when they earn it, it's paid at the rate they earned it. If you bank it and a person continues to get a raise, the value of that holiday goes up, 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 so it's much higher. Or subsequently, if somebody's salary decreases by the time we pay for that holiday or they take it off, the value of that holiday has changed. So if we pay as we go, then they take the holiday off or pay for the holiday at the rate the holiday was earned. And the other thing that it creates for us is large payouts, possibly, when someone leaves employment. Because if it's banked on the books and they leave Pitt County Government, as an example, we have somebody, I think, right now who has so many banked holidays, probably has about an eight thousand dollar value. So if that person left Pitt County now, we'd be paying for the banked holidays, probably bank comp time, and any personal leave. That's going to hit someone's budget pretty hard. So, but paying it at the rate they earned it and not having to pay that huge payout when they leave Pitt County Government. So instituting that will be really, really helpful to the budget. And bottom line, you know, at the end, you know, the manager, you know, the classification study process, we want to continue that, and like I said, we'll be gearing back up this fall with our technical law enforcement positions and restoring the one point two, the two point four pay-for-performance system for employees, and the four point eight percent certification program for the sheriff's staff and building inspectors, and the holiday for the non-exempt shift staff required to work on holidays. So I think those are the things the manager has requested. Any questions on?
We'll go around. I just had one quick one, though. The certifications, will those be retro? The certifications, will those be retroactive if you've earned it in the downtown?
We would pick, we would turn it on July 1. So, are you asking if would we pay retroactively?
Right. No, not retroactively, as in you get missed pay from the last four years, but if you, two years ago, received a certification, could you then get the paid bump? I'm not talking about paying you back pay.
Yes.
Just retroactive to the certification?
Yes, because we probably have some who have those certifications, have been holding on to them. So, yes, when they present those, yes, they would be eligible.
Okay. I just wanted to check on that.
Yes, that's correct.
Ms. Ward?
The, I was thinking about that, is there a limit to, I mean, is there a limit set for the number of holidays you can bank? Because I can see myself banking a lot of holidays, knowing that eventually, do we have to pay them for that at retirement also?
Yes, yes.
Okay. So, do we have a limit that you can bank?
There is a limit in our personal orders, but we put that limit in about two years ago, and unfortunately...
So, we still have some?
We still have some who exceeded, it's a 60-hour limit. So, it's a 60-hour limit, so it doesn't take long to get to, you know, so with the 12, you know, that's 96 hours a year that someone could earn in holiday time. So, yes, but we do have a limit, but if they have to work...
How many people do we have? Excuse me?
Yes.
I was just wondering, how many people?
Bank holidays?
Well, how many do we have that are banking, whether it's one day or 50?
You would have your, all of those work shifts.
Yeah. But do we have an idea how many we've got right now?
I can tell you that the, yes, I think I counted about 160 that have banked holiday hours. So, you know, the dollar value of that is pretty high.
So, that's the hours?
That's the hours.
What about the number of people?
No, 160 people.
People, okay.
Number 60 employees.
Thank you.
Mr. Ball?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. One thing that I think I noted, you said that the base salary, salary would increase if you have the cost of living pay increase. The base salary would increase. So, that's saying that basically it would give all of our employees an increase in their base salary.
Well, I mentioned it relative to the new hires, but yes, if you give a cost of living increase, yes, all employees get the cost of living increase. They don't move on the pay scale. It bumps their salary up. So, if somebody was at increment one, they stay on increment one, but the value of increment one increased by the amount of the COLA.
Yeah.
So, a new hire coming in would technically receive the cost of living raise, because we placed it on the base salary. So, we would hire at that rate.
Right. And it seems to me that, you know, everybody has to, you know, have the milk, eggs, and bread as a, you know, and you're paying, you're paying money for that, and it certainly affects people paid. I was just under the impression that the COLA, when the last time had we had an increase in our cost of living?
We did this year. We did 1.5 percent effective January 1. 1.5 percent effective January 1. Annualized was 3/4 of a percent, but it's 1.5 percent from January 1 of the fiscal year going forward.
Last year was 2.
2 percent of the prior year.
Prior.
Okay. For the full year.
And I would like to say, too, and because you've given those COLAs, we think, that's why when we're doing these market studies, that our base salaries are staying within the market, because we've been able to increase our base salaries by the amount of the COLAs that have been provided. So, that keeps us competitive with our hiring.
Right.
And during the recession, a lot of jurisdictions, local governments, because the CPI was zero in a year or two, didn't give out COLAs, so we had nothing to keep up with. Everybody was suppressed because of the interest rates as such, so we don't feel like we're too far behind the mark overall in the organization with all of our positions.
Right. My point is that I was concerned that we get, all of our employees get a piece of the pie, and then that, because basically, everybody got to live. And it seems as if that, you, if we're moving in that direction, certainly, I call it...
For the current year, like we spoke on Tuesday, 1 percent COLA would be about a little over $500,000. If you consider doing a 1 percent January 1, you could do it at half the cost, but then there's always the, if the full cost, the 250, we'd have to come up with in the following fiscal year's budget.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Gerson.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to say that I appreciate our staff building into our manager's recommended budget. These four proposals outlined on page 10 here, because they're built in your proposed budget, right, Scott?
Yes, sir.
And I am supportive of every one of them. I am totally supportive of pay for performance. I think that is very important. If a person performs above the standard, above expectation, they should surely be rewarded. And I think that it is equally important that that pay for performance establish the goals and objectives at the beginning of the year, because then you have something to measure against. Otherwise, it does become very subjective. If you can establish goals and objectives, this is what I expect of you, and then you measure your performance against it at the end of the year, then that is much easier to quantify than not setting the goals and objectives at the beginning of the year. The certification, I think, is very important, because what incentive is it for our employees who can become certified to get certified if we're not going to compensate them for it? And when they become certified, they are more valuable to the county. So, I'm totally supportive of that. And of course, the holiday pay, I, to me, that's a no-brainer. If a guy works a holiday, he ought to get some extra pay for that. The thing that I think that we have to do some work on is to improve our, the perception of the credibility of our classification studies. There are so many, I hear comments that, you know, we make classification studies, but we're not measuring against the right set of people or the right credentials, the right criteria. I think we need to really advertise that our ongoing classification study is doing a very good job and consistent with other counties, consistent with the industry standards, and I think if we could do that, it would be a positive benefit to us.
Mr. Florida?
Yeah, as far as pay for performance, I think we're very, very fortunate to have such a qualified and experienced presenter as Florida Hardy. I really like the way she goes along and at every turn of the page, she asks any questions. I think that's very professional, and that's a good way to do it, and ultimately, it doesn't waste a lot of time. Thank you, Florida.
Mr. Owens?
I think that we all, in accordance with the pay for performance system, is very good. Pay for overtime is not within my culture, so I won't comment about that, but I think we have too many holidays.
Thank you. Mr. Coles?
You know, the talk about the COLA, just to give you a little history lesson, if you look at the value of the dollar and everything, I can remember when Richard Nixon picked up the pen and signed the bill that allowed the federal government, I believe it in '72, to do COLAs. Now, I hadn't been to college yet. I was only a high school educated person, and I was still in the military. But I was smart enough to see that COLAs are in and of themselves inflationary. And I'm not saying that we're going to have to get rid of it at the county level, because now it's, we are a victim of that stroke of the pen. But think about the value of the dollar and what it is. There was a certain economist some years ago that projected that, you know, that in order to keep economies going, you had to have a certain amount of inflation. Well, but think about the effect on us. We struggle every single year because things cost more. Everything is more expensive. And COLA, and while it's only a part of it, that's part of the reason why we have this problem. It was an unintended consequence, or was it unintended? We have to go back and study that grand theory that goes back into the 30s and see whether or not he was as smart as what he, as what people thought he was. I have no further questions. Thank you for the presentation. Did a good one.
Sweet.
Oh, yeah, I liked the way you presented the report, but I still have my questions, because sometime it does interrupt your thought process, and you seem to have been on the road. But my personal concern about personnel and sort of thing is, comes from my personal experiences, and I'm sure you've heard some of this, Commissioner Colan, but COLAs helps with personal biases when a person performs their duties, and then the pay for performance is always distributed based on the buddy system and the personal, personal attributes of individuals' relationships. I've been exposed to that, and I've been victimized by it. But, and on the same term, if a person does work and does earn and does produce in an extraordinary manner, then yes, also the pay for performance should be there. What bothers me is something I guess you all have heard before, is when a person retires at a level of salary that they like, that they can get their retirement on, and then they are rehired by that system. I call that greed, because when you retire, you make that system. And unfortunate, there are some people who retire just to get out of the stress and strain that they were subjected to without COLAs, and they don't earn the cost of living, and they can barely get through, and they do have to make personal sacrifices. But what bothers me is those people who have been in that upper echelon of pay, and they retire, and it's hired back. And you have college students out here with degrees and a little training, and I've asked these fast-food workers, they have college degrees and can't get a job in Pitt County, and for some family reason, they must stay here, and it must be because we're getting better at living longer. But they, they need to have a job that will reward them for having earned that degree, and we are rehiring people who've already had the opportunity and not giving them a chance. And I think they would welcome being hired at a lower pay, and I think they would welcome accepting the job of worth in their field of study that they would have approved, and that would motivate us to keep a good base of individual with degrees here in Pitt County that can pay that salary for that tax dollar that we need and build a house, buy a house, and become profitable. I have, you hear the elevation in my voice, because this is something that is really here. It bothers me that the retention, the people are recruited and come back, and they come in. I'm going to share one thing. I had to take a leave of absence to get my degree, and my parents had to see to my children. My colleague, without a degree, could go on the time of the state of the same job that I was on, and did not have to just leave time or anything, and was allowed to go on pay time. I suffered while they benefited greatly and then promoted to that, and that bothers me. As you can see, it bothers me, and it's a personal experience that will come on, that will happen in there, and I want the public to know that. It's passionate. It happens. It happens. It happens.
You don't forget it.
It happens, and you don't forget it. Thank you.
Commissioner Williams, can I just make a, if you want to come out on the pay for performance? One unique thing about our plan is that a lot of plans will only allow you to benefit 50 percent of the workforce or 75 percent. The way our system works, if all 100 percent of the employees meet the 3.0, the 3.55, 100 percent of employees, there's money there to benefit 100 percent of all employees. So, I just want to make that clear, that it's not as if we are, the supervisor can only give half of his workforce raises, because it's the bucket of money they're limited to. It's a big difference compared to others.
I want to ask a question. Do you think there's time for overall step, reclassification, or to revisit that?
The pay for performance?
Yeah, one problem.
Absolutely, yeah.
When has it been done, Larry?
We stopped that process in 2011. Is that what you're talking about? The movement on the step, or the...
I think he's talking about the scale.
I think so, my question is the whole scale.
Yeah.
The pay scale that we're using is, I mentioned a few minutes ago, the pay scale stays the same until you give cost of livings. The pay scale is raised when you all approve cost of living raises. We, then we bump the pay scale up by that same amount. So, and if you're, and positions on the pay scale, that's what we're doing in that every three-year rotation, is looking at those positions to make sure they're classed on the correct pay grade on that pay scale.
They're either then moved up, stay the same, or moved down?
Yeah.
Based upon that study?
No, and following up on what Commissioner Williams was saying, does that have to also do with educational?
Oh, okay. Well, the way we grade a position on the pay scale, we're going to take all that stuff into consideration. Educational requirements.
But actually, we're not looking at the person that's sitting in that position.
I see that on the application for the position, but I'm talking about after they're hired.
Well, after they're hired, that's where pay for performance kicks back in, you know, and we're trying to reward them for, you know, for the great work that they're doing, and like I said, you know, and stop the suppressed salaries. But, so, pay for performance is going to take care of the employees. The classification study is going to keep us reviewing our positions with that three-year rotation cycle.
Thank you for your presentation.
You're welcome.
This is certainly only a small part of what Human Resources covers. We appreciate all the hard work you put in and all the areas that you do. Thank you for being here today. Does anyone need a break?
No, sir.
No, I'm good.
Let's keep, I see Dr. Massey's here, so we'll move on to the next.
Yeah, I'll take one.
Thank you.
Thank you. I can pass it on if it's my turn. Two.
Now, this is smaller. Does that mean you're only going to answer half as much?
Smaller than what?
Well, this was twice as big as that, so this mean we're going...
I didn't know you were getting the hard copy.
You know, we got an efficient clerk here. I don't know what you're talking about. She brought it out and dumped it.
I have to bring my glasses, so I can read this. Well, good morning. Thank you. Thank you very much for your flexibility in working me in today, and I know you've had a long morning. Mr. Chair, Vice Chair Ward, all commissioners, Ms. Gallagher, Ms. Leach, thank you for working around my schedule. I know you went to Raleigh, some of you went to Raleigh yesterday, and I want to really applaud your ability to bring a $400 million surplus forward. And I want, I want to urge you to bring as much of that back to Pitt County as possible. Would you please work on that? And I know you are... $400 million equals $4 million a county. We told them $400 million equals $4 million a county, and we, no one gave us a check, though. This is, right now, a season of celebration, not so much about that, but about Pitt Community College and our graduation that's coming up next Wednesday. We have the largest graduating class ever, and we have the largest number of students who are marching across that stage. So, I'm resting my hand to shake all those hands of the people who are getting their degrees and certifications, because I do feel that that's an important event in the lives of students and their families. We are having to limit, for the first time, the number of guests that they could bring because of safety considerations and minis, but at least we don't have to worry about ECU's problem of worrying about the rain tomorrow. We are indoors. This picture features our graduation speaker, Mr. Laquan Rogers. Some of you have met him before. He is a graduate of Aiden Griffin High School, and will be receiving his associate's degree from Pitt Community College at this ceremony. He has served as our student government president last year, and this year, he has served as the head of all the North Carolina Community College... served as the head of all the North Carolina Community College Student Government Associations. And he was fortunate enough to receive the Robert Scott Leadership Award, the first time ever a Pitt Community College student received such an award. And this was presented to him at our Academic Excellence Ceremony in March. So we are very proud of Mr. Rogers and he has been a great leader for our campus and all the North Carolina Community College programs. And he's made some trips to Raleigh, not only to meet with the State Board, but also to work with our legislators. Just to remind you and especially for our new Commissioners, our division of responsibility in terms of funding for the, the community colleges is fairly simple, but it's somewhat unusual, state to state. The state is responsible for the personnel and the equipment of the programs that we offer and the county is responsible, as it says here, for local support, for plant fund, operations and maintenance and support services for that. That means that you fund the salaries of the maintenance workers, our public safety officers, and thank goodness we've got a great public safety police department because of what happened over at Wayne Community College. You may have read about that. You know, there are a lot of challenges all of us face, but we have to be on the alert. So just, this is the bottom line and I want to thank you very much. This was a picture for what we did after the bond referendum in November of 2013. And I'll talk a little bit about the activity and the extension from that. But it is something that we're working away at and we've seen definite progress and we're moving forward as a campus. New science building is in planning and it will be, will be breaking ground for that this summer. This is, will be the largest building on our campus at 75,000 square feet. It will house all the sciences and biotechnology. We'll probably have some robotics over there and some business industry training. This program will be, as I said, break ground this summer and we are planning to be into that building in January of 2017. So not this next year, but halfway through the following year. Really looking forward to that. And that will be on the Bowen Farm in back of the Russell Building. The BLET program is moving forward and that is the other beneficiary of the bond referendum in 2013. We are being patient with Mr. Lassiter and the Champions Athletic Facility and extending our relationship with him. And he is in construction mode with the new Champions Facility on Fire Tower Road. It just means that we're going to have to delay entrance of our BLET program into that space that's pretty close to Pitt Community College on the other side of Sam's Club. The GOA Student Center, some of you were at the ribbon cutting for this new facility and thank you for your support of this program, which 15,000 square feet, it, it is a huge enhancement to that GOA Student Center. And I was just in that, that building this morning because we hosted our Business Industry Advisory Committee there. And they were raving about what we were doing. People from Viden, people from Dynema, a lot of different companies in our area. And it represents really a new paradigm for Pitt Community College. We've had an emphasis on access and we'll continue that. We've had an emphasis on completion because we know that students must complete the programs that they're involved in, get that degree or certification. But we also need to connect more, more intentionally with our employers. That is why we're here. Pitt Tech's roots are working with the area workforce and we got to connect that workforce development with economic development so that we continue to drive the economy here in our local area and provide the talent and the resources to make that happen. I think that this Business Industry Advisor, this GOA Student Center will allow us to do that because it has a career center in it. A career center, a new computer lab, and of course, the relocated bookstore. So it's, it's just a nice enhancement for the facility that we already had. Another new presence on the campus shortly will be an early college high school. And you've been aware of that planning that Superintendent Lenker and I have been involved in. And I'm so pleased to tell you what the response has been from our area. It's been incredible. Over 300 applications from students at the eighth grade level who are interested in participating in this five-year program where students will finish and get their high school degree and their associate degree at the same time, all at no cost. It's an extra year, it's a five-year program, but these students are eager to get involved. It's a STEM program emphasis, science, technology, engineering and math. And it will have some extremely energetic and enthusiastic students. From the 300 that we had apply, they, we weren't involved, the Pitt County Schools primarily did this, narrowed it down to 100, and then they interviewed each of those 100 students down to get to 75. And they represent all sectors of the, of the county, had particularly strong application pools from North Pitt High School and from Farmville Central, but all the high schools are represented. And I'm very pleased with the response initially to that program. Those modular units that the school system will be bringing in to house this will be located next to the Warren Building, on the north side of the Warren Building. So it'll all be again over on that Bowen Farm and, you know, we're pleased to serve them. Those students will take initial coursework in that facility, but then gradually they'll be integrated in our existing coursework at all parts of the campus. So we're looking forward to that relationship with Pitt County Schools and it's, it's going to be a, a new experience for us. Wanted to give you an idea of how the budgets, the two budgets between the state and the county compare, or should I say contrast. Since 2006, our enrollment has grown approximately 30%. And, and granted, this scale is, you know, a little bit, it's more geared for the, the larger amounts, but we have not increased significantly our county funding over this period of rapid enrollment growth. And that is some of the challenges that we face. And you can see in the next slide that the county support per budget FTE continues to lag in comparison to other, other community colleges in the state. And I just listed some of the schools that are approximately our side, size and the amount of county support that they received per budget FTE. We are at $642, which amounts to ranking us number 46 out of 58 community colleges. A year ago, we were at 42, so we've dropped down a few pegs. The state average is at $972 per student FTE. So we've got a ways to get there. But I say this realizing that you have significant enrollment pressure or financial pressures on you and on all, all the areas that you serve. And it was great for me to sit in and hear Noel's presentation and Ms. Hardy's presentation and understand better what challenges you face in funding their needs as well as, as well as ours and others. We have, in this budget proposal, a couple of different items. In the capital part of the budget, we have been receiving $75,000 a year since, since 2000. That contrasts significantly with what the public schools receive. And we feel that that hasn't really kept pace with the growth of our campus. That said, there has been an increase in the repairs to facilities line and we thank Mr. Elliott and his staff for assisting us with that. And we'll do everything we can to stretch those dollars. But with these major maintenance needs, sometimes we can't hardly do that. And the three items here are what we're hoping to accomplish next year. The replacement to the Witcher Building roof and the boiler in the Witcher Building and the boiler replacement in the Vernon White Building. We have shared with you and in your packet, you should have received a five-year plan for major maintenance. So, you know, this is something that we will see recurring over the next five years, about at this level, maybe not quite this high, but it's a fact that we have a lot of new buildings on campus, but we also have a lot of older buildings from the 60s and 70s. And just the time is coming that some of these, these systems are needing upgrading. And these are just a few photos of some of the, the buildings that will be impacted. And just for your information, the Witcher Building is, is one where we have our heating and air conditioning program located. Also, our graphic communications is based there. Vernon White has our electrical program and, you know, they're, they're integrated with our academic offerings. Our proposal also includes some operating expense increases for new facilities and we talked with Scott and Dwayne about these. And the early college high school will be up and running right after the beginning of the fiscal year. The other two, what we're hoping to do in Farmville and with the Champions Facility, Law Enforcement Center, as I said, is going to be a bit of a delay with that. So I think County Manager Elliott has worked in that delay in recognizing that we won't need quite this big a increase because we're not going to start programming in these areas as soon as we had initially hoped. The maintenance tech position, which is something that really relates to that expansion of square footage that we've seen at the campus. Since 2010, we've seen this increase in square footage from 445 to 582,000 square feet, principally these buildings that we've added since 2010. And we put 2010 because that was the last time at which we were able to add a part of a maintenance position. So that's why we are requesting an additional person for this, for this area. What we do is connect with the workforce. Our students are, many of them are getting jobs soon as they graduate. Some are getting jobs before they graduate in the welding area in particular. And we're doing what we can to serve the needs of business and industry and not only current business and industry, but those that are, we're trying to recruit to our area. We're dealing with the challenges of the same one that Ms. Hardy mentioned as far as recruiting and retaining talented personnel. We do that, we have that challenge with our, our faculty and that's one of our big requests to the, the General Assembly for funding. But for your area and your responsibilities, we're primarily interested in the facilities and that's why, that's what the focus is on my presentation. I'd be glad to answer any questions that you have.
Mr. Hamid, do you have any questions of Dr. Massey? Ms. Williams?
What are the opportunities for people who have college degrees working in a fast food, getting into those programs that somewhat places them in an industry for employment?
It's a good question, Ms. Williams. There are people in this community and all over the United States who have degrees that are in areas that may not be heavily sought by employers. And we have a number of those people who are taking programs at PCC, either credit programs in areas that perhaps are recruiting more, more strongly or in the non-credit areas, HRD, even resource development, small business and things like that. So we offer programs at both types of experiences and we've had good success in helping students and with this career center that we just added to the GOA Center. We'll be serving not only our students, but people in the community who want help with identifying areas for potential employment and upgrade. Our Career Readiness Certificate in particular is excellent because that gets students to test what their skill level strengths are and then share that with potential employers and be part of a network where they can be contacted when there's openings at a company that's seeking a particular type person. So a lot of it has to do with connecting what skills they have now, seeing if there are additional skills that they need to be competitive and then working them into this network because the marketplace for jobs is extremely varied. And we're able to do that a little bit better now because of our connections with NC Career Works, which is the old Job Link Center that's right across the street from us and we're, we're working closely with them.
Thank you.
Mr. Coulson?
Dr. Massey, you know that I support you in the community college very well and so please don't let my lack of questions compromise that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Coulson.
No questions, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Ward?
It's, I think, been clearly shared with us all along, that's one job that you do when you come and report to us as to needs and where we're approaching. And I think it makes it easier for us to understand at budget time. So we thank you for that and the presentation today.
Thank you, Ms. Ward. Ms. McGolden?
Thank you, Dr. Massey, for your fine presentation. You know, I, I'm particularly interested in the relationship that you've established with the ECU, the Viden, especially our high school in terms of working on the high school, college relationship. And, and I think that's proven to be very successful. I've been hearing it in the community. So I want to tell you I'm appreciative of that relationship that, that you established and merit with this, with this community and county.
Thank you very much. You know, we've been, we've been beaten on the doors of both sides, the school and the university for years and we really got a good relationship now. I mentioned Superintendent Lenker before. What a great partner he is. And East Carolina University, they've come around to seeing how we can be such a great complement to what they do. Engineering Department is a good, good example. You know, we're, we're working together collaboratively and for whatever reasons, the time is right. Thank you.
Ms. Garrus?
I don't have any questions. I just wanted to say thank you very much for what you and your organization does for our community. I have been very much aware of this, serving on the Development Commission Board, because whenever industry comes in and they need some special training, if you don't already offer it, you will develop a program to offer it. And that is a tremendous economic development partner for our community. So thank you very much for what you're doing.
Thank you. And Dr. Gould has enjoyed serving with you on that Economic Development Board.
He has been an asset to that board, but don't tell him I said so.
I won't. And you know, one other thing, what you said about us being able to respond to industry needs, I, I think we need to work on packaging that process better and communicating it to site selection people so that they see that in North Carolina, we can have a process that'll bring people up to speed and show them some opportunities in terms of workforce more quickly than some other places.
Thank you. Mr. Farley?
I largely echo Commissioner Garrus's sentiments and the Pitt Community College. It speaks for itself. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Farley.
Thank you for your presentation, Dr. Massey. We all appreciate the hard work that you do. I'm looking forward to attending the commencement next week. And I think that's about it. We don't, I don't have any questions for you. I thank you. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. With that being complete, that's the last presentation we have on today's agenda. We'll consider ourselves in recess until 8:30 tomorrow morning.